Councilmember Peralta?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Cantu?
Here.
Thank you. Trish Hernandez, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we just remain standing just for a few minutes in a moment of silence for those in our community that... and those outside our community that continue to come here and use a bridge for other means than its purpose. And for our firefighters that are tasked with the task to retrieve, that they might be safe, and those that we've lost in our community in the recent weeks. Counsel, we have the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
We go on to approval of the minutes, minutes of May 13, 2014, regular meeting minutes, counsel?
I move to approve, May 13.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
So then we go on to our May 21, 2014 special meeting minutes, counsel?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
A motion to approve. We have a second?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
So, thank you. So we'll go on to awards and recognitions, recognition of our Science Fair finalists. And Counselor Hahn, I'm gonna give you an opportunity to brag on these kids, and then we will take the opportunity to honor them in the proper fashion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Hank Counsel, and it is a great honor to be able to honor our Science Fair students. For probably close to 30 years now, three decades, the Taos Schools, Taos School District has been number one in the state for the number of students sent to Regionals, from Regionals to State, from State to Nationals, and from Nationals to Internationals. And I applaud our beloved teachers. I applaud and honor our students who start work in early October and don't finish, in many cases until February, and if they qualify for Regionals, then March, and if it's State, then end of March. It is a labor that truly is noteworthy, and I am so proud of each and every one of you. And I'm so proud that our community, not just our elected officials, gets to acknowledge your hard work. It's a tradition that goes back three decades. Los Alamos can't compete with you. Bernalillo? Bernalillo! Right? The dreaded Bernalillo. They can't compete, and it's because of your hard work and your guidance. And I want to honor our teachers as well, because, you see, you've got to have a really good English department to be able to write your abstract, and your English teachers help. And you've got to have a really fine mathematics professor, and they are professors, aren't they? They all have master's degrees or PhDs. They could all be teaching in college, but they choose to work with middle school, high school, grade school kids. These are professors. Without that math professor, how are you going to do your graphs? Without that art teacher, how are you going to contrast those graphs so that, as you students know, and many of us don't, you can quickly see what this experiment is about with your graph? And how about those judges? For over 30 years, the community has stepped up and gone to judge. The dreaded Judgment Day. The judges, you have to get in your white shirt or your dress and your tie, and you have to show up, and you're on your feet for hours, hours, waiting for a judge. "Please, mister, are you my judge?" "No, I'm sorry, I'm number 842." And a look of sadness falls over the student's face. So you're on your feet for hours. The judges take their work seriously, and they sit down and they think, and it is so "I guess I'm going to beat the drum for controls." Now you science students know what I'm talking about. I don't want to see experiments this year where there's no control. If you're doing a study on rap music and behavior, I want to see a control. A control in this experiment, rap music, would be no music. Right? So I'm going to beat the drum for control, so let's see that. So thanks to the judges. Thanks to the people that started this. Ernie Lopez, Jim Gilroy, remember Frutoso? Okay? These are all of our citizens, and they love you and respect you, and now you are quickly growing up, and we want to honor you and your 30 years of dominance. You don't get a trophy, do you? You walk by the trophy case every day, and there isn't one for Science Fair, is there? Nope. Do you know why? Because the trophy you get is inside. It's knowing that you've done a good job. It's knowing that you did your best. I want to especially applaud those students who don't make it to Regionals. They could have blown it off. They didn't. They pursued. They went through the judging process. They didn't make the grade. Some of them probably got that close to going to Regionals. I want to honor those students too, because they worked. So enough said. I'm going to turn it over to the mayor, because that's who you really want to see, not me. You see me all the time. And Mayor Dan Barone, and Consulwoman Cantu, and Consulman Fred Peralta, and he was our mayor for many years, and Consulman Andrew Gonzalez, and many of you remember his mom, Ms. Linda. I think Consulman Gonzalez may have gone through Science Fair, if I'm not mistaken.
Couple of times.
Couple of times, so he knows the pain you've been through, but what an honorable pain, and congratulations for your hard work. We wanted to honor you, your parents, your teachers, the judges, those that made it to Regionals, those that didn't. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Counselor. Couldn't have said it better. And again, thank you, thank the parents, thank the participants. What an honor here tonight to be able to honor those students and families that have participated and continue to carry this work forward. So without further ado, Mr. Bellis, if you would like to...
From Taos Charter School, Quinn Moon.
From Taos High and Middle School.
Mateo Vahill.
He's not here tonight, so...
Okay. If you want to accept it on his behalf.
Daniel Cordova. Stay up here for a while.
Andrea Chin Lopez.
Can we have one more round of applause for all these scholars?
Thank you again for all your hard work. So next we'll move on to our presentations. Taos County Restorative Justice, Rose Gordon. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
So, Councilman, thank you for having me here. Microphone. Thank you for having me here tonight, and thank you, Mayor. And I'm glad to see all of you and our great youth. This is a little shift, because I deal with a population that isn't winning awards right now, but they may be sometime. I want to thank the town of Taos for being a consistent sponsor for the Juvenile Justice Board. I have been coordinating restorative justice for juveniles for the last 10 years in Taos, and the town has been our fiscal sponsor for most of that time, and we really appreciate your support. I wanted to let some of the newer council member... Fritz already knows about restorative justice. He's been on our juvenile justice board, but some of you may not be aware of it, and some of the present council might not be aware of it. And I'll go through these pretty quickly, but restorative justice is a... I'm not going to read what's up there, I'm going to speak to you from my experience. Restorative justice is a response to offenses that are against the community, not simply the breaking of the law. So I deal, I work with juveniles between the ages of 11 and 18, with their parents or their guardians and their victims, and we work with what are called first-time offenders, young people who make a mistake, they break the law. Most of the time, it's fights in Taos. Occasionally, we've been asked, I've been asked, to come down to the Youth Detention Center in Albuquerque to do what's called a reintegration circle, perhaps for a young person who killed someone, either in a vehicular accident or an inadvertent shooting, as they connect with the surviving family members of someone who they killed. But most of the time, we're working with youth in Taos who have made a mistake all over the county. Cuesta, Penasco, we receive referrals for all of those youth. Our intention, like the slide says, is to identify what harm was done. And sorry for having my back to you, but it's the only way to face the microphone, I think. What harm has the youth done to themselves through their action, to their family members, and to the people that we call victims? And we want to identify, how can we best repair that harm? What is needed to recreate, to restore the fabric of community? Because when someone is in a fight, or commits acts of vandalism, or burglary, which we do see, harassment, there's, the fabric of the community is torn apart, and our job is to see, how can the people repair that harm so that our community is strengthened? So we want to identify the harm, and we create a plan for how that youth is going to proceed, and that plan is monitored by the Juvenile Probation Office. As it says here, we're giving victims and community, affected community, an opportunity to talk about what went wrong and what needs to happen to make it right. And our referrals come from the Juvenile Probation Office, they come from the court, and sometimes from the Youth Detention Center, and occasionally from some of our youth centers and alternative schools. We've used it in a number of things. We've used it in battery and burglary, a lot more social media harassment all the time. Young people and their parents don't know that it is a federal offense to threaten somebody over the media or telephone, and we've used it for threats and vandalism, primarily. What makes it work is that we have a pre-conference with all these young people. We bring them in, I meet with them and their parents for an hour and a half, get to know them. We're responding to young people as important members of the community, and it's my intention to make the intervention as meaningful as possible, and for them to know that when you make a mistake, especially the people from 11 to 18 years old, that there is a way to repair the harm, because I believe if there's no way to repair harm, why bother? People give up, and we can't afford to lose the good minds and good hearts of young people in our community. We do a restorative justice process that includes that referral, that includes the hour and a half that I spend with them, and then we sit in a circle. And sometimes people think that restorative justice, oh, that might be an easy way off. Well, if you've ever sat in a circle, no table in between you, you're completely open to the other people in the circle, and had your grandmother cry because she's been working as a maid to try and make sure you have an education, and have your little brothers and sisters say, "I'm really worried, I don't want my brother in jail, I don't want him to be so stupid and make mistakes." It's not easy. And when your victim looks you straight in the eye and says, "I'm really mad at you. You hurt my family, my son's afraid to go to sleep in the house because you broke a window and..." So I can pursue those. So we're the only county that I know of that incorporates resiliency. We want to, we want to strengthen caring and supportive families, expectations and boundaries, and hopes and dreams for the future. If you don't have a hope or a dream for the future, then where are you? And sometimes the young people will say to me, "Oh, I want to be a wrestler," or "I want to learn how to make fireworks." I don't really care what their dream is, I just want them to have an assignment in their plan to pursue. How would you actually do that? What does it take to learn how to make fireworks? So that they have some way of knowing that there is a life beyond what they've seen so far. They make apologies, both formally, written, spontaneously in the circle. They do restitution, that's done through juvenile probation and parole. One of our youth just completed paying his victims back $3,250 that he earned at Eagle's Nest, because it was a severe crime, serious crime. They do community service and volunteer work. They follow all the conditions of juvenile probation, and they're sometimes in youth development. We're asking them to do all these things. I think those speak for themselves. I miss the job shadowing program that we had in Taos, because it, I send them out to work or follow somebody who has a job they want someday, so they see what it's really like, so I miss job shadowing, being here. That's about the plan. Everyone agrees to it, everyone signs it, everyone gets a copy, including the young people. There are some of our results and local outcomes. I think, as I said, that we're above 300 different people now from all over Taos County, professionals, translators, counselors, principals, a lawyer occasionally, and school safety officers, state police sit in on the circle. Everybody gets to interact in the circle as a human being, and they want to be able to do that. What I want to say to everybody about the cost of this, and we're funded through CYFD, Children, Youth and Family, and we're funded through a federal stream, through J-JAC, Juvenile Justice Advisory Committee, that when we prevent young people from committing more serious crimes, when we have a hand in that, we are saving the community money. They have a better chance of getting jobs in the future, they're better cooperating citizens in our community, the statistics are that they perform better in school, and that everybody feels safer. We feel safer as community members. When I can say to a young person, you know, after this time we've spent together, I'd be happy to see you on the street, and that's where I want to see you. I want to see you on the street, not in jail. And that all of us benefit, and there is a ripple effect. The more often that we hold young people accountable with respect, deep respect, but accountable, we're telling them, you are capable of making a mistake and making it right. You can make other choices. And they need to be hearing that, and when they hear that, they can act accordingly, and our community and our world hopefully benefits. And that's it. So thank you very much. And again, thank you for your support, being our fiscal agent. It's not an easy job working with CYFD, I know that.
And Rose, thank you for this program. It's a program that really helps within our community. I have, you know, I've had the opportunity to sit on one of those circles, and wow, how powerful that is, and I commend the, you know, the people and the youth for actually stepping in, and, you know, it has to be an acceptance, they got to be a will to be able to take part in this particular process.
Yeah, they can't be denying accountability, they have to admit it. And believe me, for that young man who killed his friend, to sit with the father of his friend, that was no easy task. Tremendous courage and great dignity.
Is there an adult version of this in Taos County?
There is not an adult version in Taos County, but there are all over the world and all over the US.
If you want to come forward and, so that others can hear...
Somebody who's been, you know, acting stolen by an adult, asking the police to charge him of a crime, or they don't go to the district attorney, they say whatever they stole from him was not valued enough, so in essence, I'm not getting any justice. And this would be great, I would, I read something in the paper that there was something like this for adults that would negotiate rent disputes, things like this.
Oh, that's more likely to be mediation, and there is adult mediation through, in Taos County, but not restorative justice, which is different.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Chief, do you want to talk briefly about the mediation program that you've been instituting, which is fantastic?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the Taos Police Department, we went, actually we went through a 40-hour mediation program, became a basic mediator. We actually are writing up a grant right now. The idea behind the grant is to, couple, couple, couple aims for this. One aim is to get training for our officers and more into community policing, and specifically and dealing with people who are in a mental health crisis. It's called a crisis intervention training, it's 40-hour block. The second aspect is to create a community mediation program, and we are hoping to train up more mediators so we have a better pool, so we can use as mediators for the Taos Police Department, community mediation, as well as for magistrate district court, allow them to have a pool. And finally, the goal really is for us to put in the seed money with the grant, and then over a set amount of years actually have it transition into a private sector business. So that grant is going in as we speak, actually.
Thank you, Chief. I think that's another opportunity for people within our community to...
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And again, Mayor, a number of employees of the town outside of the police department, and I believe also at the county, have gone through that training, just in case there's a situation where perhaps people aren't comfortable with the police being involved in the mediation.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and to B, Taos Fourth of July fireworks event, and we'll look to Chief Gonzalez and Chief Fambro. And Jen Gordon, but I don't see her in the audience, so...
Mr. Mayor, first of all, congratulations to Chief Fambro, who we can very shortly call Commissioner Fambro, and we can confuse the two of you even more.
Thank you very much.
Good, Chief.
A little bit about why we do what we do on 4th of July. Back in 1987, it first came to our attention from one Patricia Ripley. She lost almost all of her property down in Pilad because of a bottle rocket. The next year, Mr. Kenna lost a tractor, his shed, all of his tools, because of a bottle rocket. So the next year, we passed an ordinance, the town council did, followed by the county and the village of Cuesta, and that ordinance banned... and the village of Questa, and that ordinance banned bottle rockets and ground audible devices, and it's been banned ever since, and that's all we can ban. And our thinking was, in taking something away from the citizens, we wanted to give something back better. And that came, then the owner of Sears, Charlie Orr, put together a proposal and got some money from local civic groups, and there's your fireworks display that we've been having ever since nineteen eighty-nine. So it's grown. We lost it one year because we had the Insa bottle fire. We watched the lightning strike at a tree, and then we didn't see our families for the next four days because we were up on the hill fighting a fire. But the fireworks show is a, what we call at the fire department, our most valuable fire prevention effort of the year. We went from Leroy seventy-eight, averaging seventy-eight fires a day during the Fourth of July period, which is a, used to be a five-day period, now it's a ten-day period that fireworks can be sold, to, he's got some statistics here that I think will show you what we're doing is working.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Bellis, I just went back to two thousand and five to present to see what kind of fireworks-related calls we've had. And like Chief Fambro said, you know, back in those days, we were getting fifty to seventy calls a day. Our firefighters were stationed all over the county, or the town, or our response area, and they wouldn't leave their truck. They'd go from one fire to another. And two thousand and five was our highest year since, and it wasn't even that high. We had fourteen at that time, and there was nothing, no major damage to any houses or anything like that. That was the highest. We had a couple of other years that we had nine. But from two thousand and eight to present, the highest we had was in two thousand and eight, was four fires, and from then down, it's been zero or one fire during the Fourth of July event. And a lot of that comes to, like Chief Fambro said, us getting everybody in a centralized location. And people do still go out to reservations and purchase the illegal fireworks. All the ones that are sold in the town here are considered, I mean, we can't ban those particular types, but it doesn't mean that anybody can't go, you know, to any reservation and pick up the illegal fireworks, and they do them. They do it. And this gives everybody the opportunity, all the citizens, to come together in a centralized location, and they fire off their fireworks while we're firing off ours. But everybody's together. We're not chasing them all over the county. Everybody's doing it here in town where it's more visible, and we've got trucks stationed, you know, throughout the response area. Also quickly, it's, the volunteer part of it, it's all the fire department, you know, all together. Right now, we're at thirty-one firefighters for the Taos Volunteer Fire Department, and every one of them's involved, from senior firefighters to the trainees and...
What are you saying?
Also civilian employees, senior firefighters. I'm one of those seniors, too. But anyway, there's a lot of time and effort involved in this as well. We get a lot of civilians that come and offer their help during the setup. The setup takes approximately, the setup, the discharge of the fireworks and the cleanup, it's about twenty-three hours, twenty-four hours total time that all the fire department puts together there on their own time and will get this done. And like I said, the main thing is the zero incidents. We'd like to try and keep it like that so everybody has a safe and happy celebration there. We get involved with all the agencies, with the New Mexico State Police, Taos County Sheriff's Office, Town of Taos Police Department, the Taos County EMS, and Fire Marshal's Office. They come down and help us fire them off. And so it's a big event. A lot of people come into the town to see these fireworks. Unfortunately, we're also running out of places to hold this event. I'm sure a few people will be happy to know that this is probably going to be the last, it is going to be the last year that we have it down over here on the Salazar extension due to the work that's going to be ongoing there, the construction that's due to begin. We have since looked to other sources. One promising area that we've gone to and staff has gone and talked with them is at the middle school on the bypass, but we couldn't do it unfortunately this year because they have all their entrances torn up for their, the monies that they got to improve their parking lots and driveways. And we've also talked with the LULAC over here where they hold the carnivals. So there's different places. The one thing that we cannot do as a department is we cannot take it too far out of town because we cannot leave our aerial coverage unattended. We also get a lot of cooperation by the Hondo Seco Fire Department. They come in, they cover the north side of town. Rio Fernando brings a couple engines to the bypass to help us on the south side of the town. But if we can keep the people centralized, this event can pretty much go without anybody losing a home or anything.
And as Chief Gonzalez said earlier, and I told Mayor Rishen or Baroni earlier today, you go just over the border in Colorado, and there's fireworks stands all over the place. So we fight a losing battle every year. Fire Chiefs Board has been in front of the legislature since, what, middle eighties, early eighties, and we've been trying and trying, and we fail every year. We've gotten the support of the municipal league, municipal league presidents, mayors, and we can't beat the fireworks industry. It's, we're not going to give up, but we haven't even come close. Now, the governor put it on our call the last two short sessions, we didn't get close. So this is a necessary event, our department feels, and we thank the town for their support. Can we stand for any questions?
Chiefs, thank both of you guys for this event. I just want to say, I did take the opportunity to meet with Jan and the board from Stray Hearts, and this year, they're willing to accommodate this event. And I know in the past, there's been issues with the dogs because of the fireworks going off and the explosions, and they have dogs jumping out of kennels and, you know, and dogs having, I don't know if they have heart attacks, but, you know, it scares the heck out of them. But again, they were accommodating and willing to help move dogs, and I know some of the boards here today, if she would, you want to come up and...
Mr. Mayor, if I may say, also, we've thought about it, we've talked about it, myself and Chief Fambro as well, is we try and work with these people. I mean, we're, we all have animals. I have animals. He just adopted an animal from them, and, you know, we're even willing to open up our Station Three up in Los Cordovas down by the treatment plant, pull our trucks out, and they're welcome to take any animals in there if they like.
It's fenced in, it's a building. However they want to house them, we're offering that up. We'll help them get them down there, get them back.
We've also cut the display from close to an hour to under thirty minutes now. We've been trying to work with the ones that want to work with us, but in all these years we've been here, we've never, I can honestly say that none of them have made an attempt to meet with us prior to the Fourth to make any kind of recommendations, and that's what we lack, is communication. I think we can get all these things squared away.
And it's great that this year, you know, we sat at the table with them, and they were willing to work. And again, you guys being able to put up the Los Cordovas station, you know, I know it's a fenced area, and it would suit that purpose. And I just want to turn to one of the board members, and if she would...
Hi, Carol. Can I just say a word?
Carol, thank you.
Last year, we actually explored several things, including we considered talking to French and see if he had a big truck that we could load all the kennels in and drive out to the canyon and sit there for thirty minutes. We considered the Los Cordovas station. And the solution that Jan came up with was, let's do a three-day foster program. Come in, take a dog home. The issue that you have with the animals during this is, if you can sit with your dog and comfort them, they get through it a lot easier. And when you've got seventy, eighty dogs, we don't have seventy, eighty people there that can dedicate that time. So if we can take dogs and get them into a home for three days, get them where they can be comforted during that time, it helps them get through it. And then the rest of the dogs come into the main area. This is what happened last year, and volunteers were there to help the dogs through the evening. Cutting it short was a big help. This year, because at last year, we got seventeen dogs fostered out in a very short period of time that we had to put it together, and three ended up getting adopted. So this year, we're going to do the same thing. We want to enlist, help people like Jim Leroy, get them on the air, help promote the foster program, get people to come in, take a dog home for three days, foster it through the firework period, and see if we can't boost adoptions again that way. So we do thank them. I mean, we understand, I definitely understand, the need to not, to keep the fireworks going in a centralized location, because fire is not a fun thing to go through. And when it's in July and it's dry, it can be catastrophic. So we're going to work on that foster program. We'll look at the Los Cordovas thing. I mean, the idea of moving kennels and dogs is huge, but, you know, it's something that maybe can be done. But the foster program is the one that we're going to focus on again this year.
Mr. Mayor, can I suggest something?
Please.
Totally by accident, I was coming home from a land use meeting last year when the Fourth of July fireworks were going off. Came back to the county complex and noticed there were a number of people in the parking lot around where my truck was, and they all had pickups and they had their dogs in the back, and I asked them what they were doing there, and they said, "Well, it's too loud where we live, but our kids still want to see fireworks." And so by accident, people had, and they were tailgating and, you know, having some hot dogs and whatever. And I was just wondering if maybe that would be an option, that we could actually find somewhere like the county parking lot that we could call a safe zone, and not just make available to people that live in the area that might have problems, but maybe even people that, so you didn't have to move seventy dogs, that, you know, enough of us could come and get a dog just for a few hours, or even take them to Kit Carson Park and take them for a walk or something like that.
Yeah, we definitely are open to any kinds of suggestions like that. Someone once said to me, you know, well, why do we need to do this? You know, why, you know, let's move it over to the high school. Oh, we can't do that because all those people live there, they have dogs. And my answer to them was, it really is quite simple. Yes, there might be two hundred houses in that area, and you've got a hundred and fifty families, and they all have dogs, but each of those hundred and fifty families are with that dog and keeping them comfortable. When you've got seventy, eighty, ninety dogs in one large facility, and the fervor of one getting upset very quickly spreads to the other at the other, so the concasy of barking can be crazy if you don't have someone that can help keep them quiet and keep them calm. And we use, you know, we do some tranquilization, lots of hot dogs get fed to them, that kind of thing, but still, you just have too many dogs in one small space. So the more we can spread out during that time, the better off it is. And as I said, cutting it down in time, cutting the volume of the sound down, all of those things help. And as I said, our ultimate goal in everything we do is to get them adopted. So if we can foster them out and turn some of them into permanent homes, that we will consider a success.
Mr. Mayor, if I may also, on this year's order that we did, we did away with the titanium salutes, which are the first big bags you hear, we did away with those as well.
Good, good.
And because those are the bigger ones, the six inches, so there's six inch in there, but they're not quite as loud as the original salutes, we did away with those on this order as well.
Everything is a step forward in progress, so we're happy with that.
And one of the other things, I did talk to the county, and they do have some extra kennels that they were willing to let you set up, you know, as a...
Yeah, and if we look at the Los Cordovas or a move, that might be another way of handling it. We'll explore all the possibilities for sure.
So it sounds like we have a win-win situation for everybody.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're trying to work together.
Yes, thank you, Chiefs. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
One other thing, Mr. Mayor, is that Chief, well, Chiefs, we look, as we move forward into the summer months, we look for your guidance as well, too, whether or not we even have the fireworks display because of the drought conditions. So if you just keep us informed, and that way we can start our process, too, and staff can start their process, too, with regards to the fireworks stands, whether or not. I think we have it within our purview to ban under severe drought, don't we?
No.
Actually, the most we can do is item ten B, which is on the agenda, and I was actually going to ask council's indulgence if we could move that up on the agenda, while we have the two chiefs here.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask that maybe we, since we have them here, move that up.
Do we have a motion to do so?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
We have a second?
Second.
And a second? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Cuntur? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Petalback?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
So this is a, under the public hearing portion of this, so it's under item B, Resolution fourteen twenty-five, restricting sale and use of certain fireworks, consideration possible approval of Resolution fourteen twenty-five of the Town of Taos Council, restricting the sale and use of certain fireworks within town limits, consistent with NMSA nineteen seventy-eight sixty-two C eight point one. So this is a public hearing. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. Bellis, do you want to...
Mr. Mayor, council, while this is not an ordinance, the reason for the public hearing is that we do have an ordinance on the books which permits us to do the maximum permissible under the state law, which you have a copy of the state law as an attachment to this. But the law requires that a public hearing be held at which time a finding by the governing body of a condition of severe drought is made prior to our implementing this, and it must be done twenty days prior to the implementation. So that pretty much puts it at this meeting. What we have done is also provide an attachment to you of the National Drought Center, which is a combination of the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, U.S. Forest Service, and a number of other federal agencies, which does find that the majority, with the exception of the northernmost parts of Taos County, despite our recent precipitation, because of the low moisture content within the vegetation, continues to be in a severe drought condition, or I believe that's a D-two condition. If you like, we can read the ordinance, the resolution.
Please.
Whereas the town council is duly authorized governing body of the Town of Taos, New Mexico municipality, and whereas the Town of Taos and the majority of Taos County, New Mexico, as of June third, two thousand and fourteen, have been determined by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, National Drought Mitigation Center, the National Atmospheric and Oceanic Administration, the U.S. Department of Commerce, as well as the U.S. Department of the Interior, Forest Service, and Bureau of Land Management, is being in D-two or severe drought. Whereas the dry windy conditions that currently exist within the Town of Taos requires increased awareness and preventive measures, whereas the drought conditions pose a public health and safety danger to the public through an increased structural brush and wildfire risk, and whereas under such drought conditions, the sale or use of fireworks within the municipality increases the risk of structural brush and wildfires, whereas the state constitution empowers local governments to act on behalf of the public in the protection of the public's health and safety, and whereas consistent with the above, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight six-two C eight point one, titled Extreme or Severe Drought Conditions, Restricted Sale and Use of Fireworks, empowers a municipality to hold a public hearing to determine if fireworks restrictions should be imposed within the municipality. Now therefore be resolved, the council pursuant to NMSA nineteen seventy-eight colon six-two C eight point one of the Fireworks Licensing and Safety Act is hereby resolved that fireworks restrictions should be imposed within the boundaries of the Town of Taos due to severe drought conditions. It is therefore proclaimed that the, with the exception of the town's annual fireworks display, the sale and use of fireworks that are missile-type rockets, helicopters, aerial spinners, stick-type rockets, and ground audible devices are prohibited in the Town of Taos, New Mexico, and that fireworks of a type not prohibited herein shall be limited to use on a paved or barren area or areas that have readily accessible sources of water for use by the homeowner or the general public. And it is therefore proclaimed that this proclamation regarding fireworks shall remain in effect for a period of thirty days, which is the maximum permitted from its adoption or until weather conditions have improved to such an extent that the proclamation is therefore reversed by the council.
Chiefs?
Mayor, if I could, once again, thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Bellis. What we have in our ordinance that was passed by the town council in nineteen eighty-eight, revised and re-adopted in two thousand and six, is all that's allowable by state law to ban, and that is, as Mr. Bellis said, basically all aerials, which is something that's lit and travels more than seven feet in any direction, top, bottom, right, left, and a ground audible, which is what we all know as black cats. what we all know as black cats. An editorial, after fighting this battle for so many years, I put it back on the fireworks industry. They made their fireworks the way that when we were kids, they went up in the ground, they exploded, they worked, there was nothing when it came down. Now, they're so cheaply made and mass-produced, when they go up in the air, they come down, and they, they don't function properly. They do what they can to, to have the, the most minimal grams of pyrotechnic device that they can get by with, and I know this for a fact, and I challenge anybody that, that wants to dispute this, they want to make it as cheaply, and their, their industry is one of the most profitable anywhere. So, what they do is they make them as cheap as they can, so they're not working properly. The reason we have this problem, and it all started in the 80s, is when the standards changed for the industry, everywhere in the United States started having this problem in the late 80s, not just us. So, Council's before you, and we ask you again, I mean, this is all we can do, and it's sad. We can restrict you from smoking a cigarette outside under the same drought proclamation that you're going to pass hopefully tonight, but we can't get you to stop using fireworks. We can get you to stop using a handheld lighter because of this drought proclamation that you guys are going to pass tonight, and I can't get you to stop the sale and use of fireworks. That's how sad this is. Kind of speaks for itself.
One of the very successful measures that was taken between the prior administration and county was where you joined with the former mayor, Darren Cordova, drafted a letter on town and county stationary, and personally visited the store owners that traditionally sell the permissible fireworks within the town and the county, and you had 100% success rate with doing that. And I know that you have an interest in doing that again, but I also know this is an opportunity because we are on television, for us to make people aware that, that is the intent of, of the Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Mr. Bellis.
And you know why that works, Mayor, because people that live here love this community, and that's why they do it. The outsiders that come in and sell the fireworks hit and run.
Enough, sir.
Thank you. Council, anything else? I'm going to, it is a public hearing, so anybody in the audience who'd like to speak for or against? It is a public hearing. One more time, anybody like to speak for or against? I know I did, I thought I had seen the, Buck Sanchez, wasn't he in the back of the room a minute ago?
Yes.
He was? He didn't, I guess he, he left? Okay. Okay, so, we've seen none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and, Council, which is the Council?
Resolution 14-25, restricting sale and use of certain fireworks.
We have a motion, do we have a second to that?
Second discussion.
And second and discussion, Counselor Peralta?
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, I'd just like to emphasize the need that we have at this particular point in time to restrict, and I ask the general public out there to be cautious and restrict the use of, of fireworks at this time. I realize that we can not ban them all totally, which I wish we could during these times, but if you do buy fireworks, save them for New Year's Eve, some other time when, when the weather's not as bad, and if you want to celebrate, come and celebrate with us with the fireworks that we do, and then if you want to do something on your own, do it at a time when it's not a fire danger, where we don't put other people at risk and their property. I think that's an important aspect for us to do, and, and I wholeheartedly support this, and I wish we could do more. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank Counselor, thank you, and, you know, as, you know, I work up in the mountains quite a bit, the conditions are really dry up there. I mean, when you have a, a bowl of dust following you down the, the hill, you know it's dry. And so, we really need to be careful, even, you know, running chainsaws, running just fires, people are, you know, we love the mountains in our areas, and we do a lot of camping, we just want to make sure that we put our fires out, and if we use them to cook or just to sit around the bonfire, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I may as well...
Please.
We, we stay in close contact with the BLM Forest Service, the county outline departments and everything, and, oh, when, we, we all try and stick together with the same decisions if the Forest Service does, or stage one restrictions or whatever, we immediately jump into that with them as well, so we try and keep that in the valley as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Any further discussion?
Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Commish.
Elect.
And thank you, citizens. Let's, let's have a fireless fourth.
Let's do.
Thank you.
And if we adopt more dogs, then we don't have to find that many foster homes, so everybody get out there, visit, stray hearts. So, bring one home for three days, and you'll keep it, I guarantee, look at my gypsy girl.
Counselor?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for coming tonight to, to talk about this. I know in a couple of weeks, it's been a, the cottonwoods are going to be shedding the cotton here, and my old brother back in 1986 was building his house and just about finished it a bit, and a bottle rocket flew into his yard, and he nearly knocked everything. And it seems like a no-brainer, but I realize people don't pay attention, so I think banning them is a wonderful idea.
Thank you. So, with no further discussion, call for the vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Thank you, guys, again, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, stray hearts, for accommodating. So, we'll go on to Item C, renaming of Kit Carson Park, a presentation with discussion, consideration, and possible action or direction by the Council, and we have Mr. Chris Peeper. We'll do a presentation, I know he has a contingency with him, and I'll let you introduce him and, and go from there.
Can we bring chairs up?
Please.
So, Andres Vargas is going to start off by giving us some history, and I want to thank everybody for, for seeing us tonight.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council members, and Mr. Bellis, this is indeed a historic opportunity for Taos, to consider the issue of whether Taos Kit Carson Park should be given another name, and that is the issue before you. A brief history is that General Carlton gave Kit Carson marching orders to track down, hunt down and track, track down the Chiricahua Apaches, and to kill all the males, spare the women and children for their treachery. The second part of the, his orders, marching orders, were to hunt down the Navajos and to trail them to Bosque Redondo, the, which he did, applying scorched earth policies, he burned all of their food supplies. And finally, they surrendered, and they were marched about 400 miles from Canyon de Shei, their traditional home, to Bosque Redondo, where they died in droves, in the, like, three or four different marches. And they died by the hundreds also, while they were, the few years that they were imprisoned at, there, in the government's ill-considered, considered policy of trying to convert the Navajos and the Apaches to farmers. The, they were finally, the government, the United States government finally realized the errors of its policy, and the, the Navajos were returned to, allowed to return to their native homes. A lot of the notoriety for Kit Carson stems from the acts against the Chiricahua Apaches and the Navajos. The myth that surround Kit Carson and his exploits stemmed from the dime novels that were called Blood and Thunder. There were dime novels that exploited, that created myths about Kit Carson. And Taos, being a, having, having no industry, is, has named many of its businesses and entities after Kit Carson. But there, I don't think that there has ever been a real discussion of the appropriateness of that in light of the atrocities that he did in following General Carlton's orders. More recently, Hampton Sides has, from Santa Fe, has written a book, I think, called Blood and Thunder, again, taking the title from the dime novels that were published in Kit Carson's times, glorifying and mythalized, mythologizing his exploits. And he presents a balanced view, but, and even more recently, in 1971, my brother, Philip Vargas, who was the director of the Northern New Mexico Real Legal Services, he established that program after graduating from the Harvard Law School and after having a doctorate in sociology from the University of Colorado. But it was meant, that proposal to rename Kit Carson Park was meant by, very negative, he was dubbed a troublemaker for that effort. But the effort was to rename Kit Carson Park honoring a baton death march victim from, who died in Japan after being transported from the Philippines, from baton to Japan, who never saw his daughter. But I read, I remember reading those letters, and they were incredibly beautiful, very poignant letters to his daughter that he never saw. But, anyway, that went nowhere in 1971, and there hasn't been any discussion since and about that, but you have a historic opportunity here to correct that by considering and discussing the appropriateness of naming, of renaming Kit Carson Park honoring the Taos Pueblo. And we hope that you will arrive at that decision after due deliberation, and that it'll be appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Wired is going to read a letter from Lila Johnston, who could not be here tonight.
Mr. Mayor and Council members, Mr. Bellis, my name is Steve Wired. I, I read this letter on behalf of Lila Johnston, who is a member of the Navajo Nation and grew up in this community as a young woman, and has gone to Stanford, could not be here, but she shares these words with you, and I've been asked to read them. Dear Council members, thank you from the bottom of my heart for this opportunity to discuss this interesting and important initiative. I've been presenting the idea of rechristening the park to various members of our community for a few months, and every single reaction is one of overwhelming support, joy, and hope. More than anything, this would be a symbolic gesture that brings historically divided peoples closer together as one human family. I have spoken with Hispanic groups, Anglo groups, and Native American groups, and each time I do, it is clear that this is something that people want and need. We yearn in our hearts for reconciliation and peace among cultures, and it is a time that we pass this on and lead by example for our beloved children. I personally have nothing against Colonel Kit Carson as a man, even though he played a major role in the four-year-long incarceration of 8,000 of my Navajo ancestors in a concentration camp. I have forgiven even this inside of my heart long ago. What concerns me most about the current name of our public park is not the man himself, but the symbol that this man has become. As a colonel in the United States Army, he is a symbol of warfare and division between each side of the battle line. As a man who is associated with the forced march of Native Americans in an event known as the Long Walk, he is seen as a symbol of the oppression of indigenous peoples. The question I have asked myself all my life as a Native American citizen of our town is this: Why would we choose to name our public park after a man who symbolizes warfare, division, and oppression? I have a feeling that each of us meeting here today are deeply interested in peace, unity, and equality for the citizens of Taos, New Mexico, and it brings me great joy to know that we are discussing the possibility of choosing a name for the park that reflects that dedication of peace, unity, and equality. Last summer, I brought a Native American group to meet with the youth of Taos for a children's event called Regeneration Festival. This Native American group could barely give their inspirational speeches because they felt so uncomfortable in a park named for Colonel Kit Carson. Since the park is a central meeting place and a hallmark of Taos, enjoyed by peoples of all cultural backgrounds, it would be overwhelmingly sensible to rechristen this place in a way that makes people of all cultural backgrounds feel joyful, happy, and fulfilled. I am deeply grateful to you all for even just considering this symbolic gesture of renaming the park. I see it as an olive branch extended across the fields, leading into the Pueblo from the council chambers. I see it as a beautiful unfolding of reconciliation between two cultures that have, for far too long, lived divided in bitter grudges. I see it as a way to show all of our people, from Arroyo Hondo to Yano Camado, that we are capable of uniting in the name of peace, reconciliation, and beauty for our children and their children to come. There is an immense amount of healing that needs to be done in our beautiful home, and this would have a profound ripple effect towards that end. Whether we choose to rename it or not, just the fact that we're having this conversation is a huge step towards communal healing and reconciliation. Thank you all for your time, and may we continue to walk forward in beauty together as one. These words from Lila Johnston. And I simply, as a member of, of this community for 17 years, I support the idea of, of trying to be sensitive to the indigenous people and to, to rename it, and to bring some healing unity together, and that would really reflect much of what Northern New Mexico has been. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Council members and friends and relatives in the audience, I'm Linda Yardley-Monto. I was born and raised at the Taos Pueblo, and I often reflect, reflect back at how things were in high school, and when, since we're talking about the science finalists, we're celebrating our 50th anniversary this, this year, the class of 1964. Can you imagine 50 years ago? And I was thinking 20 years ago, who is really doing science? But, anyway, just to let you know that this is my community. I now have one granddaughter who is two years old, and numerous grandnieces and nephews that are in the school system, and I think that probably, of everything, that reminds me that we have to change how we have been living for so long in this community. I remember when I left high school 50 years ago, I left this town, and I retired from the University of Colorado Health Sciences Center 10 years ago, and I was frightened to death to come back here, because I left with such terrible memories of inferiority, not being up to par, and wondering how I would be accepted by the people in our community. Not so much at the Pueblo, because always at the Pueblo, going back and forth between here and Denver, never really ever leaving home, but the Town of Taos was totally a different experience for me. And when I think about this, and wondering how we can make a change for our, our children, I'm not talking so much about just our Pueblo kids, I'm talking about all children in our community, again, from Hondo to Yano Camado. I had classmates from all of those communities, and I don't want to leave them the way I was feeling when I left high school 50 years ago. I happen to be a very accomplished individual, but I still speak my Tiwa language, I still am a part of my community at Taos Pueblo, I participate in all my activities, but I can come into town and completely feel at ease now, because I had to work through the much, the, the pain that I think I felt when I left school. And I don't want any of our kids from the Pueblo to go through that anymore, and I do believe that there are those pains yet. That's why you don't see the athletics that I think I see at our Pueblo exhibited here in the Town of Taos. I did not see one single science fair from, finalist from the Pueblo, although we do send kids out. I mean, I could go on and on with these examples, and somehow... And somehow, we have to make changes in our lives, all our lives, to become better people, to become better human beings, and to be accepting of each other as members of the human race, to quote Lila. She wrote an eloquent statement, I think, I hated to follow that, but, you know, this is my home, this is where I come from. My dad was Louis F. Bernal, and my uncle was Paul J. Bernal, people that have fought for our people for so many years and never asking for any kind of recognition. But I think it is time for our people to be recognized as people that are smart, intelligent, brilliant, that speak numerous languages, and carry on the traditions of not only our own people, but also the Catholic traditions that many of you believe in. And our people, I think, were really brilliant because we used to take all our traditional doings into the kivas at night, and then the priests would go away during the day and we would continue whatever we were doing, and we're still doing that. And that, for that reason, we have been able to survive all these years, hundreds of years, and we still carry on and we still have our languages intact, and we are so fortunate that we are able to do that and that I'm able to do the things that I do now at home. And the final analysis, I think it's up to this council to make that decision. What can you do to make this a better place for everybody to live in? You know, I walked the park and you see so many different things when you go through that park. You see different memories. And as I live in this town of Taos, I have felt, even during the parade, I have flashbacks about men and women standing and children standing on the corner scared of the conquistadores that used to come through here. I have had those flashbacks. And I don't want to have to go through those anymore, and I think it's important that changes start happening. I remember when Gene Sanchez first ran for city council, how many years ago has it been?
Ten.
Ten years ago, and I think that's about the time I moved back to Taos. One of the things that I challenged him with is, I think we need to have a reconciliation week, reconciliation committee. Let's look at what's really happening with our people in the town of Taos. And again, when he was running for reelection, I asked him the same thing. It never happened, and I still think there is time for that. But for now, I ask you to support the change of the name of our public park to something maybe similar to Red Willow Park, which is something that we have tremendous feel for in our community. And I would also like to ask the mayor to make contact with our governor, Clyde Romero, senior. Government to government is how we like to operate and how I think our tribal government likes to operate. So I'd like for you, Mayor Barone, to make that phone call to him, to talk to him about these issues. I think it's an important one. And certainly with the five of you sitting here, Fritz is a friend of the Pueblo, Andrew has worked with people at the Pueblo as well, and I'm sure Fred Peralta, as long as he's been around, knows many people from the Pueblo as well. Miss Cantu's family, Cantu, I mean, everybody knew the Cantu family. They had a store, they had a furniture store. So all of you have a history with our people. So now I'm asking you to make that change, and I think it's really important that this happened for all of us to become one, to become part of the human race. Thank you so much. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Yardley.
Thank you, Linda.
Just real quick about the name Red Willow, is that, as Lila said, this is about changing a symbol, you know, that Kit Carson, we're not here to dishonor Kit Carson, but we're here to change the symbol. And Red Willow is a native indigenous plant to our community, and Willow is used to make baskets so that it's a symbol of weaving of different people together to make something that is stronger. And I think that this historic moment can have ripple effects to the rest of the planet. You know, that Taos can take a leadership role. You may have heard that the city of Minneapolis just recently changed Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. And at some point, I think that's another decision that you can discuss, but thank you so much for seeing us tonight.
May I say one last thing?
Please, Mr. Vargas.
It wasn't until...
Doesn't have to be the last.
It'll be the last. It wasn't until August of 1949 that the Native Americans were allowed to vote in New Mexico, despite having participated in the First World War and the Second World War.
We didn't become citizens until 1924.
And again, I want to thank all of you, Mr. Vargas, Mr. Wired, Mrs. Yardley, and Chris. Thank you, guys. I know that they made an appointment to come to see me in my office, and, you know, this was something they brought to us. I think it's something that can bring our community closer together. As you said, we can knit together, we can work together, and this is kind of an outreach to the rest of our community. So, council, you know, I thought it was of the utmost importance to bring it to you. I think it was something that really meant a lot in our community, so I, you know, kind of look to you guys for direction. Councilor Hahn?
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we rename Kit Carson Park Red Willow Park.
So, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I would like a second.
We have a motion and a second. So, we have any further discussion? Councilor Peralta?
Mr. Mayor, this is something that we have discussed for a lot of years, and I feel that it's appropriate and important for the community that we rename Kit Carson Park.
No question.
I would like to have a little time to think about it and also possibly get some input from some other individuals about what the name of Kit Carson Park should be, or I should say, the park should be. Just a little bit more of history, one of the reasons why you see Kit Carson so much within the town of Taos is that because he was a Mason. And the Masons back in the early years of 1900 and that were very strong in Taos, and so, and he was very high within the Mason group, and that was one of the reasons why you see this throughout the community. But I think that we need to take a look at this more from the aspect of what is the community all about and work from that aspect, and I think that we should rename it, and we should look at an awful lot of other things that we do around here in how we present ourselves to our community and respect the participation of individuals that gave of themselves to the community. And so, I'd like to look at that. One of the things I was thinking about while you were talking was, and we look at how many individuals from this community gave of themselves during the baton death march. And we had a building over here across the street that we named in honor of them. That's going away. And should we not think maybe of all of those citizens that we should respect for what they gave to this community and to this country and to the freedoms that all of us respect and honor? That maybe this is something that we should look at as making sure that we don't forget them. And it's a very important aspect because all of these people who were there, you know, were all from the National Guard, and they weren't regular army people, but they were people who felt it was important to support their country. And they did it in a way that honors us as a community, and we should respect that. And I'm just not saying that that should be the name. I'm just saying that those are some of the things that I think we should think about before we make this decision. But I think it's something that we should do soon and not pass on it and not do something about it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Further discussion, Commissioner, um, Councilor Gonzalez, and good to Councilwoman.
Mr. Mayor, I guess for myself to, not without jumping to the renaming of the park a certain name, I too would like to see some further discussion on it. And the reason I say that is much along the lines of Councilmember Peralta's auspice is that the one common bond that we share within this community, young and old, are our veterans. I know my grandfather, who served in World War II, served alongside many of the people from Taos Pueblo. One of the baton march, death march survivors just recently passed away. He was one of the last Native American at 96 years old. So I think there's a common bond that we share in this community, and that's a very special bond. While I'm not a veteran, many of my friends, family members are. And I think, so I think to just jump to a name is a little premature, I think, without involving the entire community within it. One of the first discussions I had with Mayor Barone when he came on board was the renaming of the park to something, and be it a section of it, be it the entire park, I felt that there was a huge need for it because I think it's such a central part of our community that I think it maybe in some ways detracts from some individuals just because of the very meaning that it carries behind it. So I would like to see the renaming done as well, too, just with a little more discussion with regards to a name for it. Mr. Mayor, that's where I stand.
Okay. Councilwoman?
I recall when I was a teenager and my father having this discussion with me at the time when Taos Pueblo had requested a name change. And correctly if I'm wrong, Mr. Vargas, but wasn't that Jimmy Luhon, a veteran from Taos Pueblo?
I thought it was. I think that's correct, but I wouldn't swear to it, it's been so many years.
Yeah.
I thought it was Jimmy Luhon, yes.
I had told my dad...
That is correct, yeah.
I think you should do it, Dad. You know, it makes sense. But unfortunately, it didn't pass. And I don't know if you realize it, Miss Yardley, but I have connections at the Pueblo to my grandchildren, my Taos Pueblo, my former and late father-in-law was Delphine Macconcha, and I spend a lot of time there. That's where I run away to, and it's like a second home to me. And I think Red Willow is the appropriate name. I think it is going to come as a surprise to a lot of community members. And, but I think it's a long time coming, and it's a respectful thing to do, and I am all for changing the name to Red Willow Park.
Mr. Bellis?
Mr. Mayor? Let me just relay, I guess, a short dialogue that went on during the planning for, which happened very quickly, for Dennis Hopper's birthday celebration, which just started out as a dialogue and then quickly gained momentum. It was very interesting that it required a lot of quick discussion between the Pueblo War Chief, the Pueblo Governor, a number of families, that for the first time since the movie Easy Rider was made, that not only could motorcycles be brought onto the reservation, but surprisingly, actually, when that occurred, for the first time, that the Pueblo Police agreed that they would escort the event to the plaza and in exchange invite the town police and the sheriff's office onto the Pueblo. And if you go on YouTube and watch the film, the sheriff's office and the town police actually stop at the gate, and then they're, "Come on!", they're welcomed on. And I thought it was a wonderful gesture. And Robbie Romero, who takes, who should have all the credit for bringing all of that together, then was sitting around with some of the members from Hale Creek, a contemporary Native American group with roots to the tribe, Robert Marabell, and the discussion was about then, "Well, so what's the next event?", and it became about the powwow. And some of the dialogue was that, for, I know some of the folks from the Hickory and the Mountain Youth, Southern Youth, from when I worked in Colorado, and that the younger kids were kind of holding back on coming to the more traditional powwows because they were like, "Well, if it's our chance to get off of the reservation, let's go to Albuquerque", you know, "'cause that's really cool, and then we can be in the town for three or four days and do a lot of things." And there was a concern that at some point that younger kids may not want to participate, and how does that affect the powwow? And of course, I chimed in that, you know, not only is it one of the coolest things I've ever been to, and that actually brought me to Taos originally, but that obviously it has a major impact on who we are here and our tourism and our being perceived as multicultural. For a lot of people, that is the single event that they see as us, as a three-race community coming together, along with fiestas. And so, very quickly, people got talking about, "Well, why didn't, why can't we do the younger guys in the more contemporary Native American music that people hear through moccasin wire on K-Tow and throughout PBS, radio stations throughout New Mexico?", and that the kids could come and do their more traditional stuff at the powwow and then come and celebrate the more contemporary Native American music as an art form. And of course, the question was, "Well, we would have to do that in the park because everything's booked up." And it was, all of a sudden, it came to a halt. And, you know, I'm looking, "What happened?", you know? We had all this energy, what happened? And then I suddenly, my face got red and I started to sweat, and I realized what happened, that, you know, this was a symbol, that it had been a piece of property in the park that had had an isekia running through it and had been perceived as a park through Solar Fest of a way of regeneration, getting back to the earth, connectivity, ecology, of all peoples coming back together, but it had only really been celebrated in that way by the Anglos that had come here, and that the Hispanic community didn't see it that way, and my Hispanic friends didn't see it that way, "A bunch of hattic towners coming here and clogging up our roads." And it wasn't seen that way by the, by the Native American community. And yet, this park seems to be at the center of the town, the one place that is large enough, that is accommodating enough, that has the graves of the people that made this community in many ways famous for all three cultures, and yet we miss that issue, that how do we get everybody to come back and celebrate in that park? And ironically, the same dialogue happened when we got together with the fiestas committee and said, "Well, you know, it's great, but everybody keeps talking about how do we get back to the traditions that everybody remembers about fiestas that made it great, and that our grandfathers came and our grandchildren came, and we were too big to squeeze it into the plaza." And I said, "Well, why don't we bring it to the park?" And then again, there was this big silence. And it just seems like it is the one place that we really can come together. So everybody started saying, "Okay, if we have to rename it, whatever, rename it." And of course, you went through 50 names, and no matter who you picked, it was an insult to the people you didn't put on the list. And then finally, somebody said, "Well, it can't be a name, and we have tried that before, and it always seems to offend someone." And then they said, "Well, how about Solar Park? Too contemporary. How about Peace Park? That was okay, but, you know, is that really it?" And finally, someone in the audience who had an isekia said, "Remember when you first came here, Rick, and you asked us, 'Well, when we're tromping through the weeds, which reminded us, me, of our recent outing to the spring ditch', is how do you know where the ditch used to be, you know?" And they said, "Look for the red willow. That's so you always know where the isekias and the ditches are, 'cause the red willows grow along the isekia." And everybody in the room suddenly realized, "That's it, the land of the red willow people. It was here before all of us, there was an isekia in the park. We're talking about getting back to the earth, about saving the water for future generations. What better symbol that everybody relates to but the red willow, and that offends no one?" And so, unbeknownst to us, other people in the community, ironically, we're having exactly the same discussion. And there have even been discussions, not by myself, but by Robbie and Robert Marabell and Kathy, and I apologize, I can't remember her name. by Robbie and Robert Maraball and Kathy, and I apologize, I can't remember her name, who have talked about how, "Wouldn't it be great in the renaming of the park that Robert Maraball offered that I will lend my horses so that the War Chief and the Governor and the elders can come down? And with a blanket made from the earth, we will carry the red willows back to the park to reintroduce them, and we'll have a planting ceremony of all the cultures together?" And then I said, "And the mayor and the council should then give back a gift to bring back..." And Robbie goes, "Yeah, and the mayor come back on a chopper?" And I said, "I don't think so." But in fact, he does have a horse, and wouldn't that be cool, that we bring a gift back to the Pueblo? And to do this around powwow and fiestas, which occur so close together, and to bind all three cultures with some ceremony like that, that, yes, we all celebrate our uniqueness. That is important. We don't want to lose that. That's what makes Taos great. But maybe around that two weeks, there's also a time where we can celebrate those uniquenesses, the three cultures, but also with some symbolic event on one day, bring everybody together, and maybe the renaming of the park becomes that symbol for doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Bellis. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, Saturday, we had the great opportunity to listen to Sylvia Rodriguez talk about the history of the fiestas. And I know that our discussion this evening is not related directly to that, but the fiestas 60 years ago used to tell a story. And it started with the first peoples, and then those that came after, and those yet again. It was saddening to me that no one from the Fiesta Council was at this very important discussion on the fiestas. But we did have the great good fortune to have Karina Santa Stave in there. I believe Bob Romero was there for a little bit. As we work to begin to try and revitalize our town isekias, we all have to pull together, north and south, those in the hills and those out in the estates southwest. And I think this is a great gesture. I would also add that red willow bark is really good for headaches. But be careful, don't take too much. You'll know if you do if you get ringing in your ears. So I believe this, I don't believe this. I mean, Uncle Louis is simply stating to me, "It needs to be." So we must move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hahn, in your motion, I know you made a motion to name the park. In that motion, I would just ask if you would amend that motion to include all but the cemetery, leave the cemetery's name the same, because I believe he was buried there, but the rest of the park would be then renamed.
Well, there are other people buried there, too.
I know, but just.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interrupt you for a minute, but the cemetery is actually a soldier's field.
Oh, okay, that one.
It's not Kit Carson Cemetery, even though a lot of people call it that. That is not the name of that cemetery.
All right. Then, so, any other further discussion?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I am confused. So Councilman Peralta, does the cemetery have a name, or am I hearing you right? No name at the cemetery?
The name of the cemetery, because it was donated by, and I can't remember, I have been meaning to go back over there and look at the plaque, but there's a plaque that sits out there that says that the cemetery was donated to, originally, the, those individuals who died during the Civil War and gave them a place to be buried, who were citizens of Taos. And that's where it originated. Now, as part of that becoming a soldier's field, that's probably why Kit Carson was buried there. But it really is, the name of the original name on that cemetery is not Kit Carson Cemetery, 'cause he came in long after that cemetery was established. So I don't think that we should name the cemetery after him, although people call it that. I think it's just because it's inside the park. But I think the cemetery should be the name that was given to it at its origination and stay that way. And the park should be named whatever the park should be named.
And that's what I was alluding to, Councilor, is leaving the cemetery as the name it is presently at and naming the rest of it, if you would amend your motion to...
If I knew what the name was?
Yeah, well.
I mean, is it soldiers? Anybody out there? No?
I think we can just say the...
Veteran Cemetery? Baton Cemetery? Anybody know?
Exclusive of the cemetery.
Leave the original name?
Yes.
Anybody know anything about that? Steve?
I, there's a sign with a letter, it says, "Kit Carson State Park, ready to come into the cemetery." So I'm not a fan of that. But I have other things.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, give you a little more information about that. I believe in sometime in the 1990s, the town took over the ownership of Kit Carson Park, or the park. I'm gonna have to get my mind wrapped around this a little bit. And because prior to that, it was a state park. And the state did not want the park anymore because they were having, as they do in all of the state parks around the state, issues with budget and being able to maintain them. And so the offer was made by the state to donate the park to the town of Taos, and that we would take it over and maintain it. And that's what we have done since then. So the name on the park was done by the state in New Mexico, I don't know, whenever they established it, which has got to be a lot of years prior to this. But it just, it came with the park. The name came with the park. And there have been discussions and discussions and discussions about the name change on that. And I think it's appropriate. I'm just not sure that we should be that quick to make any name change to it, that maybe something else would be a more appropriate name to it. I don't know. There's one thing, though, there was a discussion, by the way, when I was mayor, that we had an opportunity to purchase the Mitchell property, which is on the corner of Placitas and Paso Pueblo Norte. And we tried to purchase that property, and at the time, the discussion I had with the council was that that property, that was going to be another park, greenbelt within the town. And my recommendation to the council at that time is that that park be named the Paul Bernal Memorial Park, in that this other park would be, have another name to it. And that at the time, if we were able to receive, get that property, that we would honor somebody in the same way that was an important individual to our community.
Just to give you some background. Councilor Gonzalez?
Mr. Mayor, on our town website, it shows that not only is Kit Carson buried there, but also Father of Martinez and several other prominent figures within Taos, from Taos. So in the spirit of, you know, the renaming of the park to Red Willow, or whatever it is, maybe we can name the cemetery in honor of Father of Martinez, or one of our prominent founding fathers of this valley as well, too. So we mix and mesh exactly what we're trying to do, which is the two cultures that exist primarily, that we're here with the indigenous people as well.
Call for the motion.
Did you have something, Mr. Bellis?
It does show as either Kit Carson State Park Cemetery, which appears to be the oldest notation on the web, or as Kit Carson Cemetery, and there's only one notation that says Taos Cemetery within Kit Carson Park.
Okay. So we do have a motion. We do have a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Pass.
I don't believe you can pass, can you, Phil?
Abstain? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt, too?
Yes.
Did you wish to come back?
Yes.
Counselor Peralta?
I think it's still too early to name the park Red Willow. It may be the name that eventually would come before us. No.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Councilors, just for clarification, was the motion to exclude the cemetery?
The motion was not to ex, correct, the motion was not to exclude the cemetery. It was the whole thing, correct? The whole thing.
Okay.
Thank you. And I will reach out to the War Chief and the Governor. Thank you.
Yeah, folks, Linda, before you go, I would like to, Mayor and Council, if it's appropriate, begin to set up that resolution, reconciliation committee. I think that's a logical step. I know some of the mayordomos and commissioners are already reaching out in that way. As usual, we all follow the water, don't we? So I would like to see some action on that, though. Perhaps it could be put on our next agenda, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Bellis, but I would like to see us commit to some kind of moving forward. I think that reconciliation is important, especially considering that we have fiestas coming up and the powwow coming up. So I don't know how to approach that.
We'll get it worked through, Councilman. We'll take Rick's lead on this, and we will reach out to the Pueblo.
Mr. Mayor? If I could, real quick, Rick, a couple of years ago, when I first took office, we sat down with the Governor's administration at the Pueblo, both the entire governing body, it was an open and publicized meeting, along with their governing body as well, too. Not only as an introduction to the new governing body, one myself, which had just come onboard, but to, in the same sense, extend the olive branch. And it was kind of unique that year because the entire council attended the powwow at the same time that the entire Pueblo governing body attended the fiestas, which was a huge step forward in between the two, just because of the negativity that had been felt for many years along the lines, not only just in exclusion, but the conquistador and what it meant to Taos Pueblo. But I think more than anything, it was a reconciliation to agree to live amongst each other in peace and work together ultimately as two governing bodies. So I would ask that, you know, we extend out to Taos Pueblo as well, too, within this administration, and just set up a really informal meeting with them, too, where the public's welcome to come as well, too. But just to extend a handshake and exchange some ideas across the table with regards to the issues that are facing our community. And one issue at the time was a lot of the violence that was happening between our youth. And it was discussed as to how the city council and the Pueblo's governing council could work together to alleviate some of that. So I think just any issues that are plaguing us right now, be it wildfires, our youth as well, too, may be a good time, as we have our fiestas and our powwow coming up, together to get that done pretty expediently.
Mr. Bellis, we can get that done, and we can get a date so that we can all plan on it?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. And I think one of the ways we could be helpful is, I know parking is pretty much of a nightmare for the Pueblo during powwow and running the chili line. I mean, it's certainly a good use of tourism dollars.
Yep. Thank you.
So we will, and Mr. Bellis, at the next meeting, work on reconciliation and other creative ventures.
We will, and I will contact each of the council people for your input in setting up that agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So we'll go on to item nine, citizens forum, citizens wishing to speak shall have the honor to do so for five minutes. No action will be taken. You know, I've been pretty lenient, and I know, you know, we moved our time from three minutes to five minutes, and sometimes we'll go to 10 minutes. So I really want to try to stay within that five-minute time period. We do have a buzzer and a sensor, and it goes from green to yellow to red, and it buzzes you. So please be respective of our time, too. I know we want to hear as much from the public as we possibly can, but yet, on the other hand, we, you know, our meetings sometimes run till 1:00 in the morning, and I have to sleep at the homeless shelter.
It's closed.
Yeah, I can't.
We have high hopes that this will be the first meeting we've ever gotten out before 10. I'm hopeful.
So, Mr. Northrup, I believe you're on the list. You would. I know that there was, we'll take care of some of these ones first, and then we'll go on to Strahan.
Thank you very much for that. I think most people are here for the animal shelter problems, and I'm not talking about that tonight. And I loved the last 45 minutes, and it was wonderful to see you guys could come to a resolution. I was happy with all of your discussions, and Fred and Andrew, I see where you were coming from, maybe give it a little more time. But on the other hand, I think it was an excellent decision, and I congratulate you. I just have one thing I'm going to talk about tonight. The expansion of the Taos Airport is an emotional and controversial project. I frequently form my opinions based on information discussions that come to me from knowledgeable, intelligent, and fair-minded associates. There are many facets to the airport expansion, and I couldn't be more uncertain as to what is best for our beloved town. At this council meeting two weeks ago, three local women, Margarita Denovan, Marilyn Hoff, and Jen Green, spoke of their concerns that the US military would make use of an expanded airport, something few of us want, yet is likely to happen if the expansion goes through. The United States is the greatest threat to world peace in the history of our planet. We probably could have avoided the Korean War over 60 years ago, and certainly every war since. For the most part, the boots on the ground and the military flyboys are unwitting pawns in the war-mongering military-industrial and congressional evildoers. I have nothing but sympathy for our combat vets, and I'm betting that those three women feel the same. Not one even mentioned our vets last two weeks ago, yet Mayor Barone said that the three knocked our veterans. These three deserve an apology. They did none, no such thing. Somehow, those opposed war and military expansion are seen as unpatriotic and anti-America. I believe the opposite is true. Finally, Town Manager Rick Bellis made a strong presentation in support of the airport expansion shortly after Margarita, Marilyn, and Jen spoke. Rich has no bigger supporter than me. But the Citizens Forum at Town Council meetings is not the time or place for him to make an unsolicited case for his personal agenda. And I should add to that, that Ricky spoke tonight, and I found what you had to say very useful. And you were not stating a personal opinion. You were just bringing his background and history, and I think that was appropriate. But your presentation last week about the airport, I think, was inappropriate. If anyone was to make a presentation like that, it would probably be one of the five elected officials before us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Northrup. And I did have a conversation with those three ladies in my office after, and we did talk about it. So thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. It was, I mean, we all love the vets, but again, I think that they're put in a position, in many cases, where they never should have been put to fight battles that didn't need to be fought.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time, Mr. Northrup. Thank you for taking the time, Mr. Northrup.
So Todd Thompson, did you have? Thank you for being here this evening.
Mr. Mayor, council members, and Mr. Bellis, I'm Todd Thompson. I've lived in the Taos Valley for over 35 years. And most of that time, I've been a licensed general contractor, local construction business, and I usually employ around 12 local residents in my business as much of the year as we can work. I'm here to bring an unfortunate-
Not to mention that you shop local, too.
I try to shop local whenever possible. And I like to shop local. So I'm actually here to bring your attention to an unfortunate incident that happened last week involving the town's code enforcement officer and my business. And what I have here is a stop-work order and ordinance violation signs that were placed on a job site of mine on Caie Conquistador off of Cruz Alta Road last Thursday afternoon about 1:00 p.m. Mauro Rosales, the code enforcement officer, showed up on our job site after lunch and was extremely abusive, belligerent, rude, aggressive, and threatening to my crew of 11 workers that were on the site at the time. He came onto the job and, in a loud, abusive voice, ordered my employees off the roof, told my foreman to shut down the job immediately. And we were in the middle of an emergency roofing job, replacing shingles on a woman's house that had been leaking for a long time. She'd been waiting for the insurance money. Finally came through. She called us to do the job. We were trying to get it done before the rains came. But Mr. Rosales, among other things, proceeded to take pictures of all the crew, of their persons, also the license plates of their cars, as well as inside their cars and inside their trucks, putting his camera in through the windows of the vehicles and taking pictures. He told my foreman, I'm sorry. My foreman told Mr. Rosales that there was not a stop order posted on the job, and therefore, he was going to continue working until Mr. Rosales posted a stop-work order, which is what he did. But at the time that my foreman told him that, Mr. Rosales threatened my foreman with arrest, said that he was going to call the police and have my foreman locked up. He also used the threat of police action to clear off and chase off the 11 workers in the middle of, who were in the middle of trying to close in the roof before it rained. Mr. Rosales refused to allow us just to cover the exposed roof with tar paper to prevent damage to the house, which was occupied and is occupied. I had my foreman, my foreman called me, and on the phone, I tried to speak with Mr. Rosales and ask him, I begged him to let us just close in the building so we would not have the threat of catastrophic damage to the building if it did rain, and there were threatening clouds building up that evening and afternoon. Mr. Rosales went ahead. He put a stop-order and violation notice on the building. He did not talk to the homeowner, who was present at the time. I was at another location. I had to drive 10 miles to the town offices. I got a permit application. I went to the job site. I talked to the homeowner. I went back to the town offices. I checked the map. I spoke with Mr. Bellis, who was very helpful and who later rescinded the stop order, based on the fact that the property was in the Taos County. It was not in the town of Taos. And this is something that would have been very easy for Mr. Rosales to check out. But for over an hour, he was at the job site, confronting my workers, as I said, being abusive to people, chasing the workers off the roof. And not once during that whole time did he check the map or check back with his office to make sure that that property was within his jurisdiction. As it turned out, it was not within his jurisdiction. And so I lost 60 man-hours. We couldn't finish the roof by a Friday deadline that we had. We had to go back that evening, after the stop order was rescinded, and cover the building with a tarp that cost me $150. And in the process of chasing my workers off the roof, one of my workers badly injured his back coming down the ladder. And my workers were emotionally and financially hurt. They felt traumatized. And in addition, the order for us to stop working and closing in the building could have. It did not result in this, but it could have been a disaster that cost me and the homeowner tens of thousands of dollars. If it had rained just for half an hour that evening, that, all the drywall and the ceilings, everything would have been ruined. The insulation, everything, okay? And I just want to mention that, you know, I have pulled permits in the town of Taos, in the county of Taos, for 30 years. And over the last 12 years, I've had numerous run-ins with Mr. Rosales on several job sites where he has been extremely aggressive, extremely rude, and carried on as if it was a police action instead of a building inspection. And I think that his inappropriate behavior on this particular incident, as well as past incidents that I have had with him, point to a need for this employee to have some kind of public relations training, some kind of training that would relieve his aggressiveness and result in an employee that is more capable of dealing with the public in a diplomatic fashion and a professional fashion, I would say. And I would not waste your time with this petty incident if it wasn't for the fact that it illustrates an important issue, something that the Albuquerque Police Department is wrestling with right now. And that is that public employees need to realize that the public is not the enemy. And they have to stop treating members of the public as if they were in a confrontation. But this incident with the code inspector could have easily escalated. He was on the verge of calling the police and having my foreman locked up. And there was no reason for it. He was completely and utterly in the wrong. There's no excuse for it at all. And I'd just like to say that, you know, Mr. Bellis's quick action prevented this from escalating into a more regrettable incident. But that, you know, I think it's really important that the town have some kind of oversight on their employees, have some way of getting feedback from the public. How is this employee impacting the public? How is this employee carrying out their duties? And I would say truly that for 12 years, Mr. Rosales has carried out his duties in an aggressive, threatening, and abusive manner, as far as I'm concerned, okay? I think that he's in need of some training. I think he's in need of a reprimand. And this particular incident cost me time. It cost me money. I employed 12 local residents of the town of Taos. They were denied the right to work for that afternoon. And in addition to the fact that it would have been a simple matter of Mr. Rosales speaking with the homeowner and who could have verified that they were in the county of Taos, not in the town of Taos. So he had more than an hour there at the job site to accomplish that. And I would very much appreciate it, if the council would direct the manager to look into this incident and to recommend some kind of reprimand or corrective action. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, Todd.
Sorry, I'm fortunate that this kind of situation can happen, but, Mr. Bellis, if you'd look into it and we can get it addressed.
There, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Thompson, there's already an investigation underway. I've asked another chief building official to examine the incident. But already, Planning Director and I were able to verify that, with very little effort, that in fact, it was not in the jurisdiction of the town of Taos. And if any of the representations that are made by Mr. Thompson are accurate, and in my four years at the county overseeing the planning department there, I've known him to be nothing but professional and cooperative, so I have no reason to believe they're not, then the employee greatly exceeded his authority. Mr. Thompson, I apologize. We work for you. The purpose of our having a building department is to, in fact, encourage economic development and to work to help the homeowners resolve their problems. And this certainly was not one of those cases.
Thank you. So we'll go on to, I guess, Mr. David Cortez? Okay, so the rest of the people, it looks like, if I'm right, are here for Stray Hearts. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak before we get into that, that is not from Stray Hearts? Okay, Mr. Bellis, I'm going to turn to you and we'll get this, I know that-
Before everybody starts for, against, or whatever, for purposes of brevity, the council, the mayor, myself, the county commissioners, county manager, have all received emails from everybody, pictures from everybody. I can tell you that we, the county manager and myself, have discussed this in detail, including the content of the letters, that I have discussed some of the matters with the police department. There is an active investigation pending. And we will get to the bottom of that. The pictures that were sent were extremely disturbing and did not match the content that was included in those letters. The mayor, myself, and the animal control officer, who is here tonight, performed an unannounced visit to the shelter today. And we have the pictures of all of those conditions, including the surgical room, which there were complaints about, including the cages. We visited every one of the animals in the facility, every one of them. We met with the veterinarian. We met with the staff. So if the comments can be limited to information that you have not presented us previously, it would be appreciated. A meeting was held between the mayor, the county commission chairman, myself, and Mr. Archuleta, and the Board of Directors of Stray Hearts, at which we posed some, what I consider to be, responsible questions. We received some answers. We did not, we will not accept anything just on face representation. But it was proposed by us, and it was agreed by the Board of Directors of Stray Hearts, that the best way to resolve this, to remove the personalities, the emotion and the anger and the feelings, is to have an objective third party. Neither I nor the mayor, nor those at the county, or veterinarians, or animal experts. So we have asked the state Office of Veterinary Services to perform an inspection of the physical facility, of the licensing, of the techniques, procedures, anything and everything. And that Board has agreed, in the interim, since their contract is to be renewed on July 1st, that the town and the county will together renew, and we both have that capability under the existing contract, without going to RFP. We will renew on a month-to-month basis until that study is concluded. Should the findings of that be minor? Or we will develop a corrective action plan by the town and the county, which the Board will be obligated as a condition of that funding. If there are no findings, more than likely, we will continue the contract. If there are significant findings, then the county manager and myself will be recommending to the two government bodies that we RFP the proposal at that point to see if there are any alternatives. We believe this is a fair, responsible approach, and we appreciate the cooperation of the Board and the state and our animal control officer and the county's animal control officer in taking this approach.
So with that said, it's your time. Somebody wants to speak? Please, come on in. This is fine. And you start with your name for the record, please.
I'm Nancy Woodworth. You have received letters from me, but I think-
You might want to pull the mic a little closer to you, so.
You have received letters from me. But I think you need to say a face with these letters. And that's why I'm here, and I will be very brief. I have been a volunteer at Stray Hearts for seven or eight years. I socialized cats in the cattery, worked in the office, and for the past five years, also have fostered dogs and puppies and cats and kittens. I would estimate I have fostered several hundred animals. I have had pregnant cats who delivered in the peace and privacy of my home rather than in a cage. Last month, I bottle-fed four orphan kitties six times a day. Fostering is not easy. It's a joy when kittens you have had for eight weeks go back to the shelter for adoption, including those bottle babies, the R kittens, who are now at the shelter and ready for adoption and new families. Last winter, I had a litter of five die from disease. At least they died in my arms, rather than being found dead in a cage in the morning. But it is hard. But fostering needs to be done. I am no longer allowed to do that. I received an email a week ago Sunday dismissing me from my volunteer duties, due to the fact, in the email, I was told I had violated a privacy paper that I don't remember signing, and the handbook, employee handbook, which I have never received. I have been banned from the shelter, so I will not be able to foster this summer. It is already into kitten season. I do not know how many kittens are at the shelter, because I'm not allowed to go there, who should be, and those kittens should be in foster. I did understand from the email that I had not been, or at least I was not told, that I had been fired for any deficiencies in my duties as a volunteer. My letters to you were concerned with the firings of employees. I feel that any organization that loses nine to 10 employees, either through firings or resignations, three board members and six or seven volunteers in six months has a problem that needs to be fixed. We need your help to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for all your volunteer time.
Thank you, Nancy.
I'm Jill Waston. And I'm here not to assassinate anyone's character, but I think it's important to realize that usually in any organization, trouble starts at the top. I've served on the Board of Stray Hearts for five years and as president of the Board until August of last year. And we on the Board were so happy to get a resume from Ms. Gordon. She came on with having 20 years' experience plus. And it was very obvious that she was a hands-on, very much a hands-on director, in contrast to her predecessor, who kind of hid out at the art gallery. And she made many improvements right away. She's very knowledgeable about dog socialization and training issues. And she started right away making improvements in that regard. After a few months, however, conflicts with people began to become as much a focus of the director's attention as the welfare of the animals. I think most of us who worked in- I think most of us who worked in any field realize that character and personality are important components of an effective executive. A good boss does not try to do everything herself and is not threatened by competence in others. An effective executive does not rule by intimidation and listens to what others have to say. A good executive does not set down a policy of my way or the highway. As a result of the character issues I've mentioned, one person after the next has been targeted as someone who has to be gotten rid of, and many have. I was one of the first to be targeted. I hoped it was personal, just an issue involving me. I was not unwilling to leave the board after putting in my several years, but having the executive director lead the ousting of a board member was an alarming sign of trouble to come. Others who have been ousted more recently can better speak to some of that trouble that has come. I just want to relate, my experience was that Ms. Gordon's public face, the one she shows her big donors, and the board members she likes, as well as especially Trish Hernandez, is in stark contrast to the one she shows at the shelter and those she believes, perceives as undermining her authority. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Good evening. In the interest of getting my kids home and feeding them dinner, I thought I should jump up here and go next. My name is Kristi Olson. I work for CYFD, and my husband is the attorney at CAV. We've been Taos residents for eight years, and we believe in giving back to this wonderful community. Approximately two years ago, I asked my daughters, Emma and Cameron, or who are here with me tonight, to pick a community service project to give back to this community, and they chose Stray Hearts. So I'm not here today to choose sides or pick sides. I'm here to tell you a mother's experience. We've fostered kittens for approximately two and a half years. We've had numerous kittens. Ann Weaver was an extension of the shelter for us. I called Ann, I think my latest call to Ann was probably 12:30 at night, when we had, because often you will have kittens that will die in your litter, and I would cry, and Ann would say, "It's gonna be okay." And she's been to my house, and she also knows my girls. And that's what community service is about, is about connecting to the organization. I would say approximately one month ago, I noticed that things had changed at the shelter. Staff were not happy, Ann was asked to leave, and then Felicia, and I didn't have a contact at the shelter anymore. So I had fostered kittens, and we were caring for them, and I had no one to reach out to. And quite honestly, you need that. And my girls need that. And so about a month ago, we did take one of our kittens, who wasn't doing well, to the shelter, and the current vet that was there administered care. Unfortunately, he left the kitten on the heating blanket too long and heated the kitten up to 180 degrees. I asked him repeatedly to euthanize the kitten, and he stated that we needed to take the kitten home, that the kitten probably had brain damage if it survived. We watched as that kitten suffered for four more hours before it died. That is not the lesson I wanted from my children. We took another litter after that, but I did notice a change with the staff. They're not happy. And I wait probably an hour before I'm able to drop off kittens or talk to anybody. I've had to argue with the vet to get antibiotics for sick kitten that I had. And so at this point, we've decided to take a step back. But I wanted my children to come tonight because I actually voted for all of you, and I trust you. And I know that you will get things back on track for the shelter, and that's what we're here for. I'm not here to choose sides, or who's right or who's wrong. I can tell you that what my experience is and what my family's experience is, and it does need, sometimes when things kind of go astray, it takes leadership. And that's the conversation I had with my girls in the car, is that the same compassion and empathy and understanding that we extend to the animals can be extended to the staff and to those who have been dismissed from the shelter, and that there can be common ground so that we can all work together again. But that takes leadership, and I trust all of you to do that. And I appreciate your time with that.
And I want to take the opportunity to thank you and your family for going on and above. You know, I think it's wonderful, and families step up and do community service. It's awesome, so thank you.
And I apologize, but I'm gonna go feed my girls.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. And thank you, young ladies, for coming tonight. It's important.
Can you hear me?
I think we're all right.
Okay. Greeting council members, my name is Wynne Coleman. On June 1st, I was dismissed as a volunteer at Stray Hearts. I was dismissed and banned from the property. The letter I received was identical to one received on the same day by five other longtime volunteers. No acts of wrongdoing were specified, nor was any verbal or written complaint or corrective request received in advance of the dismissal. A volunteer contract was mentioned, but I have never been asked to sign such a contract, nor was I given a volunteer handbook. Over the years, my volunteer support to the shelter has included three years of service on the board of directors, chair of the committee that developed the employee handbook, weekly visits to the cattery, where I socialized cats and kittens, washed load after load of laundry, and cleaned cages when needed, participation in adoptathons, fundraising events, public forums, and writing press releases and articles for our local newspaper on the shelter's behalf. I have also made frequent, sizable financial donations and solicited support for the shelter from friends and associates. Any nonprofit organization must depend on and value the volunteer support it receives from people who believe in its mission. Stray Hearts has benefited greatly from strong volunteer support, and new volunteers emerge from the community every month. But that is not a bottomless well. It has become clear that the shelter is tough on workers and volunteers due to authoritarian and retaliatory management tactics toward people who speak their mind or have been targeted as troublemakers. Inevitably, in a small community like Taos, word is getting out about the many firings of employees, the state of fearfulness among employees and volunteers, and now the dismissal of some of the most committed, reliable, and knowledgeable volunteers. These recent volunteer dismissals are only the most recent. Others have left of their own accord in silence and frustration. So are we here against the shelter? Are we against Jan and the board of directors? Definitely not. Are we opposed to continuation of the contracts with the shelter? Absolutely not. Let's clarify. We are sad, first, that our help is not wanted. We are concerned about unfair retaliation against employees and volunteers. And we are concerned, as our highest priority, that the animals are getting the best care they can and that they are being fostered and taken care of so that they can become adoptable into permanent homes. Because employees are so busy just making sure that dogs and cats are fed, watered, and have clean cages, it's up to volunteers to make sure the animals get socialization with humans, get exercise, and playtime with other animals. And that tiny, vulnerable kittens get the care at home that they need. The volunteers thus have a key role in the well-being of animals in the care of the shelter. That's the reason that we're upset now, and why we are seeking attention from the town and county officials to the work environment issues at the shelter that, in the end, hurt the animals most of all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wynne.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Ann Wyndham. I am an artist living in Rancho Stataus, where I've given two art benefits with Stray Hearts. I began volunteering at the Stray Hearts Shelter 10 years ago, both as a dog walker and a cattery volunteer. I now work only in the cattery because my energy level and time constraints make dog walking difficult. I am an animal lover, first, an artist, second, and a wife, third. I can literally feel my heart break when I read of an abused animal. They're so defenseless. When will this end? Since beginning my work at Stray Hearts, I've done cat laundry, six loads a week, before they bought a washer for the cattery, bought supplies, especially cat litter and cleaning items as these were often in short supply. I and others have also supplied cat beds, toys, climbing trees, scratching pads, and even cages for the cats, a donor from California. The dogs have also been supplied with dog biscuits by me and other volunteers. For adopting parents and cats and kittens, I have put together a gift bag for their new family member. I left it at my seat, I'm sorry. These contain important flyers about cats and kittens, as well as toys for the same. And they're given out, they were given out every time a cat was adopted. I've recently been fired as a volunteer because I spoke up for employees who are being emotionally abused. I have not in the past, nor will I in future, watch others being mistreated without taking action on their behalf. Since my firing, the days have been long and sad as I miss caring for the cats and the kittens who are caged at Stray Hearts. I'm also worried, as a foster mother, that I am now unable to take in any more cats and kittens. Last year, between April and December, I fostered up to 60 kittens and cats who were ill, feral, or too small and fragile to be part of the shelter population. I'm hoping that I will soon be forgiven for standing up for the abused human animals so that I can once again help the cats and kittens at Stray Hearts. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilwomen and men, Mr. Bellis. My name is Gary Storch, and I have lived in Taos for four decades. I was invited to the board on September of last year and was voted to be on the board by unanimous vote, including Ann Weaver and Wynne Coleman. These women have become the major backers of the current email hostility directed at the executive director, the veterinarian, and now the current board members. At that time, I informed all board members that I would speak out when I felt I should, and I was there for the benefit of the animals, the shelter staff, and the overall growth of the shelter. Nonprofits, sole proprietors, and corporations are independent entities that set their own goals, set policies, fundraise, hire, and fire staffing based on their essential needs, finances, and ultimate goal destinations. Before I arrived on the board, our executive director, Jan Gordon, and veterinarian, Dr. Eugene Verser, were hired for the shelter with major interviews, full vetting, and final contracts offered and completed by Ann Weaver and Wynne Coleman, amongst other board members. Since the majority of the board members have asked Mrs. Weaver for her resignation due to what I consider her consistent meddling into employee and personnel manners, which are not part of board duties and policies, she has garnered the use of the internet to bring a deluge of complaints, accusations, and a harboring of bad feelings toward the shelter. The use of the internet can be quite overwhelming when you mass, when you do mass mailings to people who have been at the shelter or haven't been at the shelter for the past year and are exposed to these scurrilous emails. The accusations of animal cruelty, killings on sanitary facilities, alleged unsavory financial dealings, et cetera, was very chilling, to say the least. The claims, the claim of firings of employees for no cause is another outrageous accusation without accredited documentation. The board has forwarded a letter to you, the town council, and the county commissioners, that addresses each and every accusation that was aimed at us without any factual evidence to any of their claims. I implore you to read our letter and feel free to visit the shelter anytime you care to. I listened to KVOT radio this morning so I could hear the accusation of poor animal management, killing of animals, unsavory financial dealings, and all the other dark accusations that had been dropped on us like a ton of bricks through emails that had been formulated almost like a chainmail. I heard none of these charges on the radio this morning. Why not? The major complaint that I heard this morning was that we discharged the volunteers for no reason. Why the poison penned by email? Letters and emails have been sent to every politician and person under the stars claiming that we were running nothing less than a concentration camp for dogs and cats. I thought that would be the main impetus of complaints this morning on the radio. Not a sentence uttered about these libelous charges. Their main complaint is that the volunteers were discharged and employees let go. This is about a business which sets its own goals and policies for the benefit of the animals. We are no different than you are. The executive director, as the mayor, hires and fires people that he or she thinks will fit the needs and directions of the organization. Stray Hearts is doing exactly what any other business entity does. If you, the town and the county, are prepared to micromanage every business and nonprofit in the county with their personal firings and firings, you sure have a lot of work headed your way. Ms. Weaver, this morning on the radio, said as her final parting shot that she will continue this onslaught on the shelter until she gets her way. I personally have had enough of Ms. Weaver and her minions attacking the integrity and the hard work of the current staff, of volunteers, and extraneous people that are out there every day helping run the shelter. Go over there and check today and see what's happening. We have a good working staff, and we have a lot of volunteers. If you want to continue to be a part of this witch hunt and retaliatory strike by a woman who thinks that no one else out there can foster dogs and cats and hire her type of employees, then so be it. I just hope that people don't start coming to you from other businesses and nonprofits in town and wanting you to interfere in their hiring and firing policies. Volunteers are just that. They are volunteers, subject to the rules and regulations of the organization that they volunteer for. They do not have a right to dictate their demands through continuous attacks on the shelter staff and board by use of adverse political pressure. We are an independent entity, just as you are. Being a volunteer who donates your time, money, and love for animals does not give the volunteer the ultimate right to dictate policy to an independent board and executive director just because you may not agree with progressive changes and goals for the shelter. I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Good evening, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bellis, and councilors. My name is Mary Domito. I serve as the president of the board of directors for the past couple of months, and I've served on the board of Stray Hearts Animal Shelter, where I was asked by the executive director and another board member to come on- executive director and another board member to come on board, and I accepted because I wanted to be of service and make a difference. I'm glad Christie came tonight with her children. I think it's important that there's a lot of confidence in the employees that work at the community's animal shelter, and of course, the last thing we want is for people to worry about that. So I'm very gratified that the decision was made to have an independent inspection of the shelter, the veterinarian, the executive director, and the conditions of the shelter as well. Nobody wants to have a safe shelter and a good shelter more than I do for the community, so for that, I'm thankful. I also want to thank all the, the people who've come up and spoken, and everybody, for their years of service in helping the cats and the dogs and the animals. But at some point, this is a business, and, and that's all I want to say, other than I want to read a letter. And the letter, the letter is from Brian Lewis, who used to work for the shelter, and unfortunately, he's ill and could not be here tonight, so I will read it. Dear Town of Taos Council and whomever this may concern, I apologize that I cannot be in session to present this in person, but I'm ill with a virus that is affecting my ability to speak. Basically, I've lost my voice, so I've written this letter and presented it to Mary Domito and Gary Storch to hand over to you, the Taos County Commissioner. I am a resident and homeowner in Taos County, District Three Gabriel Romero's Commissioner. I'm writing to you on behalf of Stray Hearts Animal Shelter, one, as a longtime monetary supporter of, and two, as a former employee of Stray Hearts Animal Shelter. I am still a monetary supporter of the shelter, and I was during my employ. First off, let it be known that I left the employ of Stray Hearts Animal Shelter for reasons not related to the operation of or management of the shelter. My leaving was unrelated to any discourse or disagreement with my employer. During the time I worked at the shelter, I was employed as a canine caretaker in the kennels. I was hired by Yamina Devi, shelter manager. During my time of employment, I found management of the shelter to be of high quality and caring for the animals and the employees. This coming down from Jan Gordon to manager Yamina Devi, to Corinne Dimas, and on to the employees. The shelter was kept clean, the cats and dogs taken care of, the highest standards, in my estimation and experience, having worked in boarding kennels and pet shops in the past. The onsite veterinarian Eugene, whom I referred to as Doc, took very good care of the needs of the animals under sometimes very stressful situations. As to my personal treatment by management, I was treated with the utmost respect, my needs, concerns, and even my wants to make my job easier and more efficient, were always listened to and met with appreciation. Never once did I feel or have any situation where I was mistreated, unfairly spoken, or put into a position of being in fear for my job. What I did find was more than I could ask for in support, help, and care for the animals under our watch by management. What I did see, and this is my personal observations, that there were a handful of employees who were malcontents, rumor mongers, and resistant to any change that affected their routine, whether it was for the betterment of the shelter and/or the animals. They had personal agendas of disruption and bullying new employees, who if they could not see past this, would quit sometimes on the first day. I was personally told by two employees that they could not put up with the drama. I asked what drama, and I was told things that were said to them by these aforementioned employees. I was shocked to hear these things because I had not experienced any of them. I did witness an employee who was asked to stay an hour overtime to help me, as I was the only caretaker in the outside canine kennels one day, when the other caretaker was out sick. She came in crying and told me how unfair it was she was being treated because she was asked to stay an extra hour, and she had plans to have dinner with her grandmother. I told her explicitly I did not want to hear about her personal grievance, but I did ask if she had told management that she had plans. Her answer was no. Well, I took it upon myself to let Yamina know. I did not need her assistance to finish my work, and I thought it was best to let her leave. Yamina agreed with me. Let her clock out and leave. Yamina acted in her best interest and in mine, as I did, not want to become involved in her self-created drama. There was no intimidation, and I felt quite comfortable asking this of Yamina. Not once in my tenure at the shelter did I ever see Yamina or Jan intimidate, disrespect, or yell at an employee, but I sure did see other employees talk back to Yamina, talk behind her back in front of me. I witnessed them telling new employees some incorrect and disrespectful things about management, and this went on nearly daily. In summary, I will say Jan Gordon and Yamina have done a remarkable job operating Stray Hearts, making sure animals' care, treatment, and well-being come first and foremost, but never with disregard for any employee. They have done wonders, raising money for the shelter, implementing new methods to handle the care of a large amount of animals, taking stock, and looking for ways to improve. Anything said to the contrary is a lie. Thank you. Respectfully yours, Brian Lewis, Rancho State House. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Thanks, Brian.
Hi, my name's Ed Cohen. Been a resident of Taos County for fifteen years. Past my bedtime, so I want to do this quick. I moved to Taos to semi-retire. I have twenty-six years' experience in business manage, both corporate and as a small business owner. I've been on the Board of Directors of several trade associations. I was involved with the American Motorcycle Association to help sanction independent motorcycle clubs that would make the image of motorcycleists better. I'm a certified national animal control officer. I was kennel supervisor for Ten Thousand Wags. For five years, I was the one to help the owners implement the policies and procedures and, and the care of the animals, and they've been very successful with very minimal problems with kennel cough, ringworm, and stuff like that. I've worked with Sam Malatesta, an international dog behavioralist. And I served on the Board of Directors for seven years at Stray Hearts. I've probably been involved in this county for ten years in every aspect of animal control and sheltering. I left the Board of Directors because of this exact situation. I think it's very distasteful to go to the public and use the public for what you want to get. I do not like to bring individuals into my problems. I like to go out, find out what the problem is, and correct the problem. I don't like attacking people. In this situation, I don't feel I have any other choice. The reason I'm here tonight is because I have ten years vested in that animal shelter, in animal control, in anything that involves dogs in this county. And I left because of this exact kind of nonsense that we're here for tonight. This group, it's not the first time, it's not the second time, it's the third time. The other two times were with different executive directors, different board of directors. That shelter went through seven board of directors, possibly eight before Jan Gordon came. That board has rolled over, I can't tell you how many times, all because of this stuff. We've had some of the best businessmen in this town, some of the most dedicated people serve on that board. That board has been accused of mishandling funds to the attorney generals. It took us a year and a half, hundreds of hours, to get a clean bill of health. That board has been accused of this same stuff. We had an expert who has inspected over two thousand shelters internationally, and we came out in the ninety percentile before the improvements were made. The problem here is that this is a business. This, a board of director has no right in that shelter. I know, because I spent seven years doing the exact same thing, being in that shelter. A board of director is supposed to raise money, set policy, procedure, and supervise employees. When a board of director comes in and starts telling employees what to do, they need to be removed from the board of directors, because this is the result of that. There's a difference between shelter medicine and taking care of an animal at home. Totally different thing. It's like apples and grapes. You can't compare taking care of a litter of kittens at home as opposed to two hundred, three hundred animals in one facility with the air conditioning and heating ducts running through every room in the building. That's why we built five different pods. I have seen this shelter attacked by individuals or one group over and over, and every time it's been nonsense, and that's why we're here tonight. It's not because we have a bad ED. We had eight of them. Everybody found a reason to chase them out of there. I was the longest surviving board of director by being seven years, you know? I saw this board roll over and over again. I've seen board members put up tens of thousands of dollars. I'd sit there and we'd hold the animals we had to euthanize. If you were on that board and you decided to euthanize a dog, you sat with it when it got euthanized and held it. I have done that too many times to be criticized and to see these good people who come out and serve on that board and work at that shelter for wages that are peanuts, so they can pick up dog crap and that, and then have some people who are in a fluffy mode and have no idea what a board of director is or a business is. And I'm pissed, because this got to stop. You guys have been in town a long time. That shelter has been the target, and it's a handful of core people that just don't get it. And you can call in the state, I hope you do, you're going to find out once again, we got a great shelter. If we have an employee or a volunteer who doesn't follow policy, procedure, who goes in there and says, "The board of directors is wrong about this," and that's a board of director telling the employees that, how's business going to run? So, thank you for your time. I'm going home to bed, and I hope you get out of here early.
Please. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Anybody else? If not, I think Mr. Bellis made mention of kind of a resolution that we have come to between the town, the county, in moving forward. I think it was agreeable by the board, and I'll allow one more.
Council members, my name's Jeannie Moretti. I absolutely was not going to speak tonight. I wanted to come and hear this. I'm a volunteer at the animal shelter. I'm a dog walker. I have been there for four years. And I'd like to talk a little bit about, you know, when you say volunteer, I think a lot of people think, oh, well, you just go there and you volunteer and just have fun. Well, you do. I go in five to six days a week. I put in two to four hours a day every time I go in there. It's not easy. I would like you to see my arms right now. I have, I've just been wrestling this afternoon with one of the dogs I love very much, Brandy, who's quite a handful, so it's not an easy job. What I'm very upset about is this to me is about how whistleblowers are treated. We are seeing this on a national level that is disgusting to me. It is the same that's happening on a microcosm, whatever word you want to call it, at the shelter. The people who have spoken out have been punished. Simple as that. When they're talking about, and I know Gary was very eloquent in what he was saying, so was Mary, I mean, they were wonderfully reading these things. I happen to know Brian Lewis. I think he's a great guy. He worked there maybe a month, maybe two. I mean, how much credence can you put into what he saw? We have been seeing this for a long time. I'm not against the shelter. I'm not against Jan. I like Jan. We just had a nice talk this afternoon. She asked me, she knew that I had gone to a council meeting, had spoken up, and said at that meeting that I had been afraid to go, because I thought I might be targeted next. And she said, "God, why didn't you come and talk to me?" I said, "Because that's the feeling here." If you, you know, and then I didn't want to go on any more than that. And we, we had a very nice conversation. I think the board members are all working hard. I think they have failed to tell you that there's only four of them, because when Ann Weaver was dismissed or asked to resign, which she did very graciously, two other board members in protest followed, one of them being the president of the board. What does that have to say? They're talking about, I mean, Ed's, I love Ed. He's up here talking. He's right. People go in there. I have not seen, when he's talking about, and I'm sure he did as a board member, going in there and cleaning shit. I have not seen one board member, I don't know, maybe Gary has, I haven't seen Mary in there, I haven't, I haven't seen any board member in there shoveling shit like the rest of us do. So please, you know, I'm just saying that, you know, all of this is such incredible nonsense. I have no, I just don't, I mean, it's disgusting to me. And to be saying, you know, it's this, who did this and who did that? Come on. I'm sorry. That's it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Counselor?
Thanks, Jane.
Mr. Mayor, I guess the one thing that I've observed from all this, and in the endless slew of emails, both pro and con, that I've received, is that I, I do look heavily upon, much like my employees look upon me, as the leader of my organization, as a community leader, as you as the mayor. Anytime there's a dispute amongst employees that arises, or, you know, amongst ourselves as council members, that we sit down and we discuss it like adults. And the one common thing that I'm hearing, and it, it just blows my mind how as a volunteer you can be fired. So, I mean, I, I do have concerns. I entrust our manager, who has done, I believe, a good amount of due diligence with regards to this issue, in, in sitting down with the parties and coming out to, to an amenable and agreeable decision and conclusion. But again, with that, for me, it's just saying, somewhere within the organization, something has, has failed, something is failing bad for board members to be pitted against volunteers, volunteers to be pitted against board members, and, you know, just all the way around. So I think long ago, maybe once the second volunteer was let go, come to Jesus, so to speak, needed to happen, where the entire organization was brought together and individuals were, were talked to. Again, these are, I, I get that to serve on these boards, to serve as volunteers, you are extremely, extremely compassionate individuals to deal with, with the animals of our community, both abandoned, non-abandoned, misbehaved, and well-behaved, and I commend you all for that. We as elected officials, we oftentimes get the brunt of everything, both good and bad. So for us, and for me as one, to sit up here and, and get the slew of emails, both pro and con, makes me think as to how we fund the organization and how, how we move forward with this. So I look at it with regards and say, look, either the organization becomes fixed, or I, I don't want government to play that role of stepping into a nonprofit. It's not our role. We are policymakers, not micromanagers. So I ask Mr. Mayor, along with our manager, that both sides of the parties be heard out, and the best amenable decision be made on the, the best interest of the animals themselves, and set all personalities aside.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just one short comment, and that is that anybody that's raised letters of dogs, particularly large dogs, know that it's amazing how much seems to go into them and how much more comes out of them, and I don't mean to be gross, but taking that situation and putting it in with dogs that are, let's say, mistreated pit bulls or other large animals that can be aggressive, and trying to, the logistics of standing in an animal shelter and just what it takes to move them in and out of pens, to socialize, to clean the pen, to feed, I, I know what that scale is like with puppies, and to imagine, and I say this to everyone, current volunteers, past volunteers, all of you, you have my true admiration, and, and I know how you feel about the animals. The mayor and I were tearing up, looking just that some animals had been there, their life is in that cage for the past two years. And, and I know that people have made efforts to get that dog out and be adopted, because you could see they'd been taken out, brought back. It's a heart-wrenching job, vocation, and whoever you are and however you feel, I know that what makes this a hotly contested issue is that it, it's something you feel inside. that what makes this a hotly contested issue is that it, it's something you feel inside just watching every, all the volunteers and what it takes just to keep that place clean. So, my, my thanks and gratitude go to all of you and I know that the, the county manager feels the same way. So, thank you for being involved, thank you for caring, and we will try to resolve this as equitably and as rapidly as possible because as the councilman has said, in the end, it's the animals that we all, all of us, I don't think there's anybody here that doesn't care about getting the best for the animals.
Counsel, anybody else? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So, anybody else under Citizens Forum that wanted to speak? Not, we'll go ahead and move on to the other portion of our public hearing, ordinance number 1409, amending the zoning map. Ms. Martha Perkins, our P&amp;Z Director.
Okay, we got, we got 28 minutes, you guys.
We got, no. Move it.
We got 10.
And just wanna open this public hearing in consideration and possible approval of ordinance 1409 to change the zoning on approximately 8.789 acres located at 1127 Paseo del Pueblo Sur, from C1 neighborhood commercial to C2 general commercial within the town of Taos. Ms. Perkins?
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. I don't know if you need the script. Normally, we go through and we ask if there's, you identify the parties and the witnesses and then whether or not there's been any ex parte communication and whether or not there's any conflict as far as this case goes.
And usually, that's within the county, through the council. Does anybody have anything that they need to recuse themselves on this issue for? None?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I talked to Mr. Yarvitz, he said he didn't have more research or anything, and it was really about another matter.
Think we all know Mark by now, everybody. Go ahead, Mark.
Okay. So, this request is actually to request a rezone from C1 neighborhood commercial and C2 general commercial to C2 general commercial for the 4.789 acres located at 1127 Paseo del Pueblo Sur within the town of Taos limits. Amy is showing here where this property is. It's outlined in green, and then if you go to the next, that's showing the zoning and how along Paseo del Pueblo Sur, it's in red, which is C2. And then on the backside of the property, on Gustav Road, it's C1, which is in the pink. And this is the aerial photo of it, and then if we go to the next slide, you can see kind of what the property looks like. And then looking at it, at this map, you can see she's labeled the various, the visitor center at the intersection there with Canon and the gas station, and then you go on down and there's a huge arroyo and then the property is designated in the green. And in front of the property is kind of like a little strip mall with Pro-Lube and then across the street, again, our commercial businesses. When we look at a, at a rezoning case, it's considered an amendment to the text, so there's five criteria that we look at. These are the five criteria and they ought to be the criteria that you use to make your decision tonight. The Planning and Zoning Commission actually met twice on this case. They met on April 2nd and then they met again on May 7th. The primary concern of the commission related to criteria number four, that the benefit to the neighborhood will weigh out, will outweigh any potential impact on the surrounding properties. Their concern was that by rezoning the entire property C2, that there was gonna be more traffic and heavier traffic on Gustav Road, and they were concerned about the middle school there. However, they did not feel that that was enough of detriment to the neighborhood to deny the case. They actually tabled it and continued it at the next meeting to think about this case some more. And then they actually went ahead and recommended approval without, just recommended the approval of the zoning without requiring a commercial site plan because what I had told them as a staff was that we would require a commercial site plan if and when a project came in on this property. What we're trying to do is we're trying to separate zoning from a project. So, what we're looking here is just at the zoning. We're not looking at any specific project. The agent is Mark Yarvitz for the property owner. As far as we know, he doesn't have a project in mind. So, we're looking at this just as a, as a rezoning. I submit the staff report as part of the record and also the other attachments that I included. The staff report includes the minutes from the meeting where the decision was made to approve the rezoning. The applicant here is, is here to make his case.
Is, is Martha, is the applicant and the owner the same people?
The applicant's actually the agent, which is Mark Yarvitz, and he's representing the property owner.
And the property owner?
The property owner is Goose 24 LLC.
And then the other question I have, can you briefly tell me the difference between, let's see here, C1, C1 neighborhood commercial and C2 general commercial, just so I have a better understanding? I think I understand it and I have it up here, but I just wanna, for the public to, I just...
Okay. The C1 zone is intended for neighborhood-oriented, small-scale commercial uses primarily to support convenient goods and services to the residents of the neighborhood areas in which the C1 zone is located. Mixed uses are encouraged in the C1 zone. And then the C2 zone is intended for general commercial uses and services along streets carrying large volumes of traffic where a commercial use characteristically already exists. And then when we actually look at the code, we're looking at what the permitted principal uses are, and on the left-hand column is the C1, and then on the right-hand column is the C2. So, the C1 is neighborhood commercial and the C2 is general commercial. So, the C1 does not allow, it allows eating establishments but not bars and clubs, whereas the C2 allows lodging establishments excluding bed and breakfasts in our boarding house. It also includes eating, drinking establishments. And then under C1, general merchandise retail, everything's allowed except for department stores, discount stores, supermarkets, and pawn shops. And then in the C2, those are allowed. If we go on, in the C1, we're looking more at specialty retail establishments, neighborhood-type stores excluding automobile pleasure, craft dealerships, large equipment sale and rental, machine shops, manufactured home sales and service, and packaged liquor sales. So, really, the intent is for C1 to be more neighborhood-oriented, where C2 is more your regular commercial. The other thing that plays in here are conditional uses. You actually have to go to Planning and Zoning and request a conditional use. It's heard, again, on its own merits. In the C2, go-kart, go-karts, carnival, thrill rides, amusement facilities may be allowed by conditional use. And then wholesaling or distribution operations may be allowed by a conditional use permit in the C2, which is, again, the regular general commercial. Again, there are setback requirements when a lot is in a C1 zone and it has a residential next door, the setback requirements of the R6 zone apply, which is another residential zone, and the maximum lot coverage allowed is 50%, whereas in a general commercial zone there aren't setbacks, there are zero except for the front yard, which is 10 feet for landscaping. And then there is a setback if there is a residential nearby, and that's, the setback should be the lesser of five feet or 20% of the depth of the lot measured from the front or rear property lines. And then again, the lot coverage for general commercial is 60% for all structures. And then the other difference is the provisional permit. You need to, if you wanna build a bigger store, depending on which zone you're in, you need to come before the commission and ask for a provisional permit. And what's allowed in a C1 is 10,000 square feet and with a provisional permit, the maximum square footage could be 30 square, 30,000 square feet, and that's gross floor area. And then in a C2, the permissible square footage is 30,000 square feet versus, well, and then you could ask for a provisional permit, which would be, again, evaluated based on the merits of the application. It could go as high as 80,000. If you note, C1 is 10,000 and all other zones are 10,000 as far as permissible building square footage, that's because the C1 is intended to be neighborhood, neighborhood commercial. C2 is 30,000, M1, which is manufacturing, is 30,000. And then there is an allowance in some of the residential zones, R6 and R14, for 30,000 as the minimum square footage.
Then Martha, the other question I had, I'm sure within our regulations, there is some notification qualifications that we have to notify the people that border the property, and has that been done and do we have that in the record?
Yes, that has been done. With a rezoning, we notify all the property owners within 300 feet and we measure that from the corner of the parcel going around 300 feet. Then the state statute actually requires that for a rezoning, we provide certified mailings to property owners within 100 feet. We put in a legal notice in the, in the Taos news and we make sure that that's in the Taos news for the public to read at least 15 days prior to this public hearing. And then in this case, we also posted the property. As long as you meet two of that, those three criteria, you have legally notified the public.
So, which two did we use?
We used all three in this case. And then we also have more than one Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, so we noticed those. So, this has been aired with public, with the public.
Mr. Mayor? If we could call Mr. Yarvitz up? Mark? And you'll have to be sworn in.
My name is Mark Yarvitz.
Do you swear, affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do. The synopsis of this is this is a split-zone property. It was originally 10 acres when my client bought the property. We sold off two acres to the Kit Carson Co-op to build a command center. The client owns 8.8 acres with a split zone. There's no residential around it and over the past few years, I've had some discussion with some groups about developing the property, but dealing with two different sets of rules to develop this property with the line that was drawn through the center of the property, when that was done and how unbeknownst to me, but I'm just trying to get one zone for the entire property. So, if there's some activity, development activity for a property in the, as Mark Collin would say, in the top dead center of town, in order for me to go forward for my client and help him solicit a proper development, I would like to have one set of rules rather than two, and that is the purpose for this zone change, to get it all as C2 rather than C1 and C2 mixed. That's my story.
Counsel, you have any questions?
You wanna open the public?
Any public? There, I don't see too many public, but anybody have any questions? This is a public hearing, so, no? So, seen none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel? Counsel Peralta?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Martha, my questions are to you first. Does this property have a, the reason I'm asking this question is because the amount on Paseo Pueblo Sur is very small, frontage. The majority of the frontage is actually on Gustav. Has this property been given a Gustav numbering?
The address on it is 1127 Paseo del Pueblo Sur, so it's addressed off of Pueblo del, Paseo del Pueblo Sur. So, it's the tiny...
I know what we're talking about, but I'm asking, is there another assigned
Address?
Property address on Gustav?
Not at this time. That does not mean that we could not address it, but no, there's not an existing address right now. It's, it's one parcel even though it's shown here as two.
No, no, I'm sorry, it's not two parcels, it's, it's a, it's a line drawn in the middle determining that half of this property should be C1 and the other half of the property should be C2.
Exactly.
Counsel?
Can I add, addressing?
No, no, I'm sorry, Mark, I'll ask you when I want you to answer. So, the determination by the commission on this was to allow it, but originally, there was some concerns about the change from C1 to C2 in this particular neighborhood.
Yes, that is correct.
What changed their mind?
You know, I can't speak for each individual commissioner and, and how they decided to vote. There was a different...
There should've been discussion, though.
There, there was a discussion. There was some concern about the traffic being allowed, the heavier traffic possibly associated with the C2. There was also discussion about if you allowed this, the current situation with the C2 being the smaller piece, that to develop that would probably result in something like a strip mall because this, the C2 part of the parcel is like one-third and the C1 part of the parcel is like two-thirds of the total area of the lot. And so, there was some discussion about that, how, how could the C2 portion be developed and it was like a strip mall versus if you had the entire parcel, then you might be able to look at, at some other facility, say, you know, something to do research and development, Trader Joe's, maybe even, you know, a Target or somebody that's looking for a bigger parcel, eight to 10 acres. And then there was also discussion about on Gustav, maybe you wanted to have like live-work office, so you'd have, you know, mixed uses on C1 and that one contribute to the traffic, or maybe you would once again have a bunch of private businesses that may require more than one curb cut. There was discussion about traffic flow, and so there was a bunch of, I mean, people were kind of back and forth. The main concern was that the middle school was right there on Gustav across the road and that you would have, you know, children and they, they were concerned about that.
What is the frontage on Paseo Pueblo Sur? How many feet?
That I do not know. The applicant probably does. The applicant probably does.
Mark? Um, right now, we have a, an arrangement with the property owner adjacent to the entryway with, uh, Mr. De Godoy, where we have agreed to swap him some land in exchange for, uh, our opening was about twenty-seven feet, it's adjacent to his existing driveway, and we worked a deal with him, signed, sealed, not recorded yet, to allow a, uh, and then there was a DOT permit allowed, which has since expired, to allow a, a right-in, a right-out, and a left-turn-in, a three-lane access at the intersection, which includes the property owners plus a portion of Mr. De Godoy, so that a proper entrance can be created. In exchange for that, Mr. De Godoy would be swapping some additional property to him, because he has a triangle property, we're going to square off his piece, in addition to making that access more reasonable for both parties. There was a DOT permit that was approved, but has since expired, that allowed a three-lane ingress egress at that intersection on the front.
So, the, the footage on the front is twenty-seven feet?
Um, I believe that was, uh, about twenty-seven feet, and the opening for the DOT permit is thirty-six feet, so there was nine feet contributed by Mr. De Godoy. Twenty-seven feet, correct.
Okay, the current property only has twenty-seven feet on Paseo Pueblo Sur, correct? So why couldn't the, the property really be looked at from the other side? That the property really is a Gustorff property and not a Paseo Pueblo Sur property, since you don't have enough property to make an entrance?
That could be done.
I mean, why didn't the...
The, the, the application was actually to change the C one portion to C two.
No, no, I understand that, but I'm saying, but in looking at it, why was it a consideration to look at this from being a Paseo Pueblo Sur property and not a Gustorff property, since the majority of the property fronts Gustorff? And in fact, there isn't enough land on Paseo Pueblo Sur in the current deed to allow for ingress and egress even to that property? Commission didn't look at that?
We didn't look at that, because that wasn't what was, uh, the application was for. The application was to zone it C, from C one to C two. So the commission has to weigh the application based on what the applicant is asking for.
But I understand that, but I mean, in, in weighing that...
Right.
The obligation of the commission is to look at the property and whether or not it is actually a Paseo Pueblo Sur property, or a Gustorff property. And you have that determination to make. That's the commission's, that's the commission's responsibility.
Right, that is the commission's responsibility, and they did talk about what would, what uses would be allowed on the C one.
So the property could be considered to be all C one rather than C two?
That is true, too, yes. And that, that discussion did come up. Um, they were looking at the adjacent parcels as well, and they did discuss the fact that across the street where the middle school is, is zoned R four, um, but they did also note that there is this line that goes down and splits quite a few parcels along Pueblo del Pueblo, I mean, Paseo del Pueblo Sur, and, um, so that they, you know, it, the discussion went all over, there are seven commissioners, and every single one had a different, you know, uh, thought process. So I can't speak for them, all I can say is, it's now before you, at, in a separate quasi-judicial hearing, um, there's the five criteria that we actually could go through, and the council can make their decision and overturn what the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended.
I have a, a concern with... Item six on your criteria for review, in saying that the amendment is justified because the original zoning was an error. I don't know if the original zoning was an error, because I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission when this property was zoned.
I believe this...
And...
Okay, go ahead.
And it, it had no concern about whether or not this was a single property or multiple properties. The idea here was whether or not, uh, Gustorff Road should have a C two type of traffic under or not. And when you do this, you try to make sure that the property that you have on Paseo Pueblo Sur has enough depth for, for it to be developed, and the same thing with the zoning that you have on Gustorff, and, and the protection of the neighborhoods. So, um, I don't, I don't know that that is, is something that I would say was, was an error at the time that it was owned. Uh, is it an error now? I don't know. I'm, I'm look, I'm looking at this, but I, I'm just saying, I, I don't particularly like that in the resolution. Because I don't think it was an error at the time?
Okay. Yes, the staff report itself, staff said that they didn't know if it, the original zoning was an error either. So, let me see if I can find the resolution. Of where are you specifically talking about in the resolution?
Item six.
Item six. Um, whereas the town council finds the proposed zone change meets the requirements set forth in the Land Use Development Code as the...
Wait, I'm sorry, let me go to the resolution.
Is that the paragraph?
Review criteria is number six.
Criteria number six.
On the screen.
Right, this is, this is...
That's in your, that's in your ordinance as well.
Right, and all it is, is it's kind of boilerplate language, because this is the review criteria that's used to decide, um, when looking at a zone change. It's just like, this is the review criteria that you looked at, at making a, a, a change to the text of the code. And I think that's the intent of putting that in the ordinance, that these were the six criteria that the, that the commission looked at, and then the council looked at, to make the zoning determination or, or rezoning.
Let me look at the language again, please. Well, that's not the way I read the language, it says, whereas the town council finds that the proposed zone change meets the requirements set forth in the Land Use Development Code as the, number six, the amendment justified the fact that the original zoning was an error.
Okay, so we could, we could change it...
You need to change, you need to change that language, or if, and if that's in the original ordinance under the zoning, um, can't use that criteria for your change.
Well, we can just say, um, that the proposed zone change meets the requirement set forth in the Land Use Development Code, um, review criteria for a zone change, and then list those.
Okay.
Or somehow, you know, show that that's the six criteria that are, that is used to look at a zoning application.
But does it have to meet all six criteria?
No, it does not.
Okay, that's why the language needs to be changed.
Right, and I, I understand that now we're looking at it.
Now, let me ask you this question. The property to the south of that, across the Arroyo, isn't that also zoned C one and C two?
Uh, yes, it is.
So shouldn't we make a change on that one as well, if we're going to do this one?
Um, the town attorney and I have actually talked about this, and he was suggesting that maybe we do address these parcels that are split-zoned. Um, but that's as far as it's gone.
But not in all cases is a split zone a bad thing?
Exactly. And I agree with you, so I actually prefer this method.
But if we're going to do this, shouldn't we be doing it as a total neighborhood rezoning?
As far as an area master plan?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, one of the...
Rather than, rather than a, uh, spot zoning?
Well, it's not considered spot, because the adjacent parcels are, are C two, and you see C two at the intersection where the visitor's center is, that that...
But the two, three properties next to it are not a C two.
Right, but then if you go on down the street, you can see that there's big blocks of C two, next to residential neighborhoods.
I'm not questioning that.
Right. So this is staff's opinion, every counselor will have he or she's own opinion, and the council as a whole votes on this, so...
No, I understand that, but I'm still saying, and I want to have your opinion, that's why I'm asking these questions.
Okay, so in my mind, it's not spot zoning, because you have, um, C two adjacent to it.
And your recommendation that this is relevant zoning.
That it's relevant zoning?
In other words, that it meets a criteria that it should be changed within the master plan of, of the universe.
Uh, yes, staff recommended, recommended approval of the, of the rezoning.
I have some real concerns on Gustorff. I travel that street a lot. It's got some real issues. Um, and I don't know that we have enough easement there, to make any great changes. Do we have, uh, the ability within the provisions of this to, uh, modify the approval of this to gain easement from the landowner to, uh, improve the accessibility to that area, um, if we change it to a C two? And I'm not looking at that as just this property, but all the way down the strip.
I think that we would have to bring that back as a separate application, um, because this, this application stands on its own, I mean, what you're considering tonight is the application. If we want to look at something else, then we need to take a different approach.
Well, my concern is partially what you voiced, the concerns of the commission had, and that is the, uh, accessibility, uh, to this property, if it was to be developed as a C two. Uh, we already have lots of issues with the ingress and egress of that middle school coming out onto Gustorff Road. Uh, it, it's challenging at times. And, uh, putting something across the street that could have the same amount of traffic as we get out of the middle school when that's in session, uh, could be dangerous.
Yes, and that's why the zoning is separate from the, a commercial site plan review, which would go before the Planning and Zoning Commission, where they would review, they, they actually require a traffic analysis, and they would review, you know, the, the project and recommend ways to make the project actually fit in the neighborhood better. Um, so the rezoning is separate here, and I, I hear what you're saying, and, you know, none of these things are easy, as far as making the decision one way or another.
I understand that, but I think that, you know, we, we shouldn't be doing things that shoot ourselves in the foot in ten minutes later. And part of that has to do with the accessibility of, of land and its use in the future. Um, and that's where I'm coming from with my concern about the change in the zoning. Not that I feel that it's not a proper thing to do, but I have concerns that we make decisions and then we come back, and it's very difficult.
Yes, and I understand that, and with it, being zoned C one, you could still have quite a few curb cuts on Gustorff. So that's an issue, too, when you're looking at the zoning.
Cuts don't necessarily mean traffic.
Right.
A lot of traffic. A single cut can have more traffic than ten cuts, depending upon what the development is.
True, but that's at the site plan level rather than at the zoning level.
I know, but the site plan for C one is a lot different than the site plan for C two.
Right, I understand, I hear you.
That's all the questions I have right now, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, did you have any more for Mr. Yarovitz here? Counsel?
I would like to listen to what Mr. Yarovitz, uh, has to say.
Um, the situation in particular, if you see the triangle piece adjacent to the Paseo del Pueblo Sur property there, what, um, if, if we do not get the zone change, the client winds up probably splitting the property, such that all of the traffic in the C one would come off of Gustorff, and all of the traffic on the front, with the DOT permit being redone with Mr. De Godoy, would come in from the front. What we're trying to attempt is to bring in most, if not all, of the traffic off of Paseo del Pueblo Sur, to minimize the traffic going out onto Gustorff, and...
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask this?
Please.
That is your intent. Ten years from now, you may not be the person that's developing this property, and that intention could be totally different, so we shouldn't be talking about, unless you have a particular project in mind. We need to talk about the property and its potential any which way but loose.
Okay, but I'm having difficulty bringing even in a client to deal with the eight acres with two different sets of rules to follow. So you'll wind up with two different sets of commercial designs, which is okay with the owner of the property, we're just going through this process. The curb cut has not been completed, because Mr. De Godoy did not finish part of his, um, part of the equation. We have all the documents signed, I could record them tomorrow, and we have sufficient access from Paseo del Pueblo Sur. Without Mr. De Godoy's participation, we have zero access from the front. But we have all that lined up, and I could record everything tomorrow. He was supposed to put in the curb and the entrance with a paved apron so many feet into the property. He has yet to do so, so we have not traded him a parcel of land to square off his property in exchange for doing this shared easement off Paseo del Pueblo Sur. But, um, it's, it's a difficult property, and we agonize over coming, even coming here for a zone change, to get one zone to develop under. And whether we took a C one for all of it, or a C two, my client said, well, I won't give up a C two, that's kind of silly, because we're off of Paseo del Pueblo Sur anyway, and that's more of a C two. But, um, I, I don't disagree with your comments, it's just a question of winding up with a different animal on the property, an eight, eight and a half acres in the center of town, uh, and, and again, number six in the criteria said zone, an error in the zone change, or a change in the land use development issues, or there's a third criteria in that number six, which could have...
Or, or by a change in the town of Taos's overall development policy.
Right, so the question is, we have a parcel in the center of town that's undeveloped, and the opportunity, as we continually talk about economic opportunities here, is greater for this parcel if it's one zone than if it's two. And that's why we came in here for a blanket, or for a zone change, so we had one set of rules to follow on an eight-acre parcel, rather than two sets of rules, and then doing a, uh, an administrative lot split and splitting it into two different parcels, which is nothing that the client thought was in his best interest or the town's. So that's why we're here for this.
Okay, and, and I can take a look at number six, and all three of the criteria you're talking about there, it doesn't meet.
Would you go back to number six, please? I don't have it in front of me.
The vicinity...
Or by a change in the...
The vicinity hasn't, the vicinity hasn't changed. In other words, there isn't more commercial C two in there, we haven't rezoned any of the properties adjacent to you, so that doesn't apply.
What would you commit to the...
Or by a change in the overall policy, development policy in the town, that hasn't changed, because we haven't upgraded 2020 plan, until we do that, we don't change policy.
I see what you're saying.
So, I'm just saying, number six just doesn't work. Unless you use it as just a guideline and not as something you have to actually prove. So, that's all I'm saying.
The commands, would you consider the command center a C one or a C two usage?
It would be a C one usage, applicable usage.
Okay, just thought I'd ask that question. I'm not sure if that would be allowed in neighborhood commercial.
It's an office building.
It is now, I'm sorry.
No, but even, even before, it's still an office building, uh, you know, no matter how you use it, command center's just an office. Um, anyway, I don't have any more questions on that.
Okay.
Counsel, any other questions? I do have some concerns, you know, with raising it next to the high school there, or maybe the elementary, or, you know, it's just, or middle school, I just, I do have concerns, especially as our director said something about, um, a bigger store, and now, big trucks possibly in and out of there, because, you know, they usually go around the back to unload and load, and I'm sure they're going to be going out if, if that's was the use of it, I don't know. So I guess the front of it, the rear of it is against the elementary, but I just want to mention that it is a concern.
And I agree, Mr. Merritt, it is a concern, but the comfort that I found in this, as I read through it, was that everything's got to come back to planning and zoning. And so, and there does not seem to be a tremendous difference between a C1 and C2. So given that anything that happens on this property is coming back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I took a lot of comfort in that. So I also would like to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission and you, Martha, for your reports, when I get them and I read them, are very well put together. So thank you for doing that.
Do you have one other question, Martha?
I have a question.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead. No, no, this goes to your question, your comment. Was that a conditional use on the approval of this? That the development has to come back to the county, to the commission? It could be because there are a lot of developments that wouldn't necessarily have to or have to have your approval as long as they meet the criteria of a C2 zone.
Yes, we discussed this at the commission level as well. The current code is actually combining rezonings with site plan approval, which is contract zoning, which is illegal. So the original staff report actually recommended that a condition be added, that a commercial site plan go before the commission for formal approval. The commission itself decided that they didn't want to do that. They have found in the past that putting too many conditions on an approval that they have made have not been followed, and I'm in the process of trying to separate with a text amendment, trying to separate the zoning from the site plan approval and requiring commercial site plans to go before planning and zoning. That's the way I've known them to be approved. I don't feel comfortable with, you know, the code administrator making that decision or the planning department making that decision on their own. Especially given, I think, what the intent of the town of Taos's code was, that the commission does have the opportunity to review the site plan and give formal approval.
So just to ask, if Mr. Yarowitz, client came in tomorrow and said, "I want to split this up into 10 lots." And I'm going to sell off the 10 lots, and each lot, whoever buys that, they're going to be developing that. That would change your whole site plan and wouldn't necessarily have a site plan anymore because you've got individual lots.
Yes, but they would have to go through the subdivision process, which actually goes then to council again.
But that can be who knows when down the road, and there's a lot of different things that can change between now and then. So what I'm getting at is that unless this is developed as a one single parcel, it's really not necessarily going to come before you again as a site plan. Correct?
I don't understand what you're saying there. Given the acreage,
If he develops it all as eight acres as a single development, that development would come before you, correct?
Yes, as a commercial site plan.
If he was to subdivide it?
Then the subdivision would come before the commission and then to the council.
Okay, and after it's subdivided and sold off in smaller parcels.
It would depend on how those parcels were being developed. If they are residential parcels, then you're right.
I'm talking about, we're changing the whole thing to C2.
Okay.
And so when it comes back as a subdivision of C2, I mean, we've already subdivided it once because we took out two acres for the command center. So to say that we wouldn't subdivide it again is...
I understand what you're saying, and that's why I believe the code needs to separate out a commercial site plan for review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Currently, the way the code is written is it separates out the site plan along with a conditional use permit, with a rezoning, with you know, for every type of application that comes before the Planning and Zoning Commission, there's the site plan attached to it. And what I would like to do is take out the site plan and just have it stand on its own so that all commercial proposals actually go before the Planning and Zoning Commission as a commercial site plan review and be approved that way, rather than having the planning department and the internal town staff decide whether or not to allow commercial development given the site plan. That's my recommendation. I have not, I'm working on that code right now, but that has not been brought before the Planning and Zoning Commission, nor the council. It's in the progress of being written. It's pretty elaborate just because that's a big section of the code.
But you can't deny a site plan as long as it meets the code.
Right, but the code requires quite a bit with a site plan. And then the code administrator can require that it go through the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that's what I would require for approval.
If you're here wanting to...
Right. That's why we recommended in our initial staff report that the commission consider putting a condition on their approval to have
But they didn't do that.
No, they did not do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, so I just want to clarify that. Thank you for that discussion, Martha and Councilman. So do I have my comfort blanket or not?
With me, you do, but he's absolutely right because it's not outlined in the code as such. Another director could decide to go ahead and approve a commercial site plan.
So how soon can I get that comfort blanket?
Well, you could
I don't mean to be flippant, but I seriously did when I read that in there. At least I thought I did. I
We have the minutes, and that was the intent of the commission. And the minutes do talk, we actually reviewed the tapes today, and I kept putting on this caveat. So now I forgot what I was going to say, to be honest.
You can set the condition, right?
The commission did address that issue. And when I read that, I took comfort in that. But now what I'm hearing is that although you agree with the commission, it appears that if you leave Martha and we get another director in who does things differently, that they can create that change without without any checks and balances.
Unless we set the condition.
But the condition, well, now, or does Martha need to prepare that and then bring that back to us?
I don't think she would need to. We could do, we could set the condition right now.
I don't know that we can.
On a zone change, I don't believe you can.
No, you can't on the site plan, just as you were asking for the easement before, but the zone is a zone.
Yeah.
But the issue here, and this is what Martha's bringing up, is that under our current ordinance on zoning, the commission does not have the authority to require the site plan come before them unless the director brings it. So that condition couldn't be placed on this zone change. If she changes the ordinance to what she's talking about doing it, then it would be there. But until it's there, it's not, it's not there. I guess the best way to put it.
So wouldn't that, in essence, mean that going forward, even though we're, should we approve today, if you finish your ordinance, that property would be bound to that ordinance?
That's correct.
Correct?
That's correct, and the
Unless they have a site plan right now today.
Right, and the text amendment, I have advertised it in the Taos news, and I am working on it, so I plan to have the, at least a draft go before the Planning and Zoning Commission at their next meeting. Because I feel that this is very important.
So the comfort zone would be you having the text and it's still being subject to implementation unless they had their site plan today.
Comfort zone would need to tell Mark to put, raise up his hand and say, "I will not bring a development until until the zone, until the hardness has changed."
I pray I have some activity on this property. I'm confused. I assumed that all commercial development required a site plan approval through planning and zoning. Is that not correct?
Through her department, not.
Through her department, but I have never had a project, commercial or otherwise, that didn't go before planning and zoning. There's never been an administrative approval of anything. It's always gone before P and Z for approval unless it's under a certain size. Is that what it is? Is there a cutoff? Why would an eight acre parcel come under review versus a half acre? What's the differentiation there?
Well, there's a provisional permit for, you know, stores that are over in the C1 to 10,000 square feet. So that would trigger that commercial site plan review through that provisional permit, and there are architectural standards that need to be met as well. If it's a smaller lot, which I think Councilor Peralta is getting at, not, they don't always go before the Planning and Zoning Commission, at least not from what I've seen, looking at past files.
Really?
But I think the intent of the town land use development code is to have the site plans reviewed. The problem is how the code is written in that it's attaching site plans to every single approval process, including zonings or rezonings, and that legally is not appropriate.
Councilman Peralta, I'm presuming when, since you were involved in the zoning here, that the intent was in creating the C2 in the front, the C1 in the back, then the residential, was to create a buffer zone between heavy commercial and residential.
And also
And also protection for the school.
Protection for the school and in recognizing the carrying capacity of the road. So if there's a decision, considering we have C1 creeping up on Paseo del Canyon and then stopping, wouldn't it seem to make more sense from a long-term planning perspective that if you were going to change this parcel, you would eliminate the C1, but then you would have to plan for the widening and an easement of Gustorff, at least up to
Santiago.
Santiago to Canyon in order to accommodate probably a divided, a median in the center, which would provide the safety features for the traffic entering from the Paseo side as well as from the school.
And partially, one of the reasons I'm bringing that up is because in the past we have done zone changes with an agreement between the town and the developer or the owner to give us additional easement so that in the future, when it does develop, we have the easement available to us to to do the safety requirements, you know, to protect the traffic in that area, both for the developer and for the neighborhood. So this is the reason I was bringing up the question about the C1, C1 going all the way to Paseo del Canyon, and that other parcel there, which I think is, looks like maybe three different owners. But, or two, one owner, I guess, no, two owners. But in other words, in order to, if we're going to make that change, then we need to look at the future, when it does develop, that we have the proper resources to make things happen. And if nothing else that we can do now, if there's no way we can make those adjustments, it is that we put the developer on notice that in the site plan, you're probably going to have to give up some property to protect the public in that area. And so that's some of the reason for the discussion I'm having tonight.
Quid pro quo. I see what, and also looking at it from the bottom to the top, if you eliminated all of the C1 and made it all C2, that would be consistent with the extremes of that area.
Well, actually, you wouldn't want to do that with those condos that are in there.
Yeah, I know, I see the condos, but from Santiago to Paseo del Canyon, where we do have now more than sufficient capacity on Paseo del Canyon to handle traffic off of Gustorff, that's not the issue, because I understand what Gustorff is. I've driven out of it many times myself.
But we have, we have traffic coming out of that middle school going in both directions, north and south.
Eight AM and 3:30.
Well, no, no, but the buses go north and south, and so do the people that pick up their kids, so it's a pretty heavy traffic early in the morning and late in the afternoon, so and if you've got a real heavy development and they're bringing and throwing traffic on there as well, we've got to there's a, we have to have a real concern about that and look at that from the standpoint of, in the future, we're going to have to do something in there.
It sounds like you, regardless of what happens on this particular property, that perhaps it should be looked at for widening Gustorff there just for the school alone from what you're saying.
Yeah, but, you know, our budget is pretty small, so we need that help.
It's always nice to have that developer contribution in addition to the right of way.
I'm not saying that he's against any contribution. His goal is, frankly, his goal is to, you know, have me bring something there on the entire site that makes sense, and dealing with two sets of rules is kind of very difficult for me to do a presentation to. Previously, there was the application for the BLM, was looking for a large campus to consolidate all of its offices. This was one of the they pulled the RFP off, but this was one of the projects in running. They were looking for six plus acres, and they brought this to my attention. What are the rules are we following even for BLM? And I said, "It's kind of difficult." They removed their RFP at the time. And I've spoken to a few other potential projects, but they've all pretty much said, you know, "We can't do anything. You've got two separate properties. You don't have one eight acre property. You have two separate properties, even though it's owned by one person." So I was here to try to straighten that out. The option for the owner is to certainly split the property along that line at this point, if that's one of his options. I don't know. We have nothing on the table right now. I have no site plan development work in place. Just trying to move it along. Frankly, but you're right that once you do a zone change, the zone change is there, he could sell the property to somebody else who sits on it for a while and then develops it five years from now. Once the zone change is there, it's a permanent zone change. So I understand the issues and the difficulties here. I'm just trying to figure out how to go ahead with this parcel and develop it, whether to split it up into smaller ones or to take advantage of one of the few, one of the few remaining large parcels in the center of town that could accommodate. We did speak to Lowe's once upon a time, and then they said they needed 10 acre minimum. We were close, but we only had eight acres. And then we spoke to someone else and said, you know, "We'll take a look in a few years when we're doing it again." And so I've dealt with these issues, and I haven't been sure what direction to advise my client who owns this property on what to do with it. So I thought doing a, at least getting a consistent set of rules for it would make sense, but if I was sitting where you are, I would be asking the same questions. I don't know how to deal with this. The question at P and Z was, "How can you guarantee we'll get most of the traffic off Paseo del Pueblo Sur and not use Gustorff for the traffic?" And I said, "The DOT permit allows a three lane entrance there, and we would expect most of the traffic is coming from there to begin with." Short of that, there's, I don't have a site plan or a review to do anything, so.
So Mark, based on the information that Councilor Peralta is asking with regards to easement, how apt is your client to possibly providing that easement for that purpose? Now, and does your client, I'm envisioning owns from Paseo del Canyon to the end of the property where Kit Carson starts, right?
Well, that, my client would be, I could speak to him. He'd be open to He'd be open to, you know, if that improves his property by having a larger access off Gustorff, and that improves his ability to get something done, we're talking about 10 feet? Do you know? Or we talk, I don't know what we're talking about.
Fifteen?
We're probably talking about 50.
Fifty feet.
Well, you're talking width, and I think Councilman Peralta is talking length. Let's clarify.
No, he's talking about 50 feet of width.
Okay. The reason for that is, as Rick said, you know, because if you're gonna put a median in there to protect.
Media with two lanes on either side, and then you need the room.
Two lanes on either side.
Two lanes on either side?
Yeah.
And then you're gonna need the room for turn-in, turnout on yours. But that's your problem, that wouldn't be ours.
No, I understand the turnout issue.
Let me look at it from, from my perspective, you know, on, on traffic flow. I could see the traffic coming in on Paseo Pueblo Sur on that 33, except for truck traffic. You can't make that turn. But leaving, if I was, you know, as a customer, I'd go out through Gustorff. It's too difficult to get back on Paseo Pueblo Sur, so it's that small entrance, especially if you wanna make a left turn. So I would go out.
A left turn out, what is it allowed? It was a right in, a right out, and then a left in from the middle lane, but no left outs. You could easily exit and take a right. There's not a lot of traffic there, but there's no left allowed out.
So that's dumping an awful lot of traffic onto Gustorff then, is exactly what we're talking about, which is gonna come back out to Paseo Pueblo Sur for the most part. But it could also go down the other way into the neighborhood. And this is the reason we're talking as much easement as we would need to properly do that, and particularly if we're gonna meet our policy on bike lanes.
What about the school participating in the width? They have no issue?
I doubt it.
I doubt it?
Yeah, I, I'm just.
No, I agree. I'm in the middle of a puzzle. I have a puzzle here. I have a client that says, "Help me develop this property. What are the rules? What are we doing?" Every time I entertain a potential client for this, it's, it's like they stand there scratching their head, so.
Well, let's put it this way, Mark, and make it simple, and we can close this conversation. Your client has to understand if, if this is gonna be C two, that he's gonna have to provide some easement to alleviate traffic potential that's gonna come off, onto, onto Gustorff.
Why do you need two lanes and a median? That's five lanes for that section of Gustorff?
Because you have two lanes now, and it's.
You can add a third lane.
Well, let's put it this way. We can't handle the traffic adequately the way it is.
Great.
And so your client is gonna have to fix the problem for us.
Right, but if he develops it at C one, he would be doing curb cuts, but that would be it. He wouldn't be obligated to do more than that.
Yeah, depends upon what the development plan looks like.
Well, little one acre parcels with small buildings, as you suggested. I don't know.
Okay, Martha.
No, I'm, I'm with you. I'm not, I'm not trying to suggest I have the answers. I'm just trying to.
I understand that, but I don't want to try to give you as the potentials, the possibilities of what can happen in the future, that's all.
Mr. Mayor would.
Should this be considered a continuation and ask my client to donate some land?
That, that's what I was gonna suggest.
Or just come back with an application that says, "We'd like to, we found a client. He wants to do X, Y, and Z. He would like the entire parcel." Is it a variance request or a conditional use on the C one to go forward? Combination of those things rather than doing a zone change?
I think it'd probably depend on the client.
Depends on the use of the.
I don't think, I don't think that we can. I don't think that for requiring a zone change, we can require an easement grant. That would have to come in, in the development plan. So I, all I'm trying to say is, I'm trying to give you all of the scenarios out there of what could possibly happen going in the future that we're gonna have to have something to fix that thing. And I'm just saying is that I'm pretty sure we're, our Planning Department and Planning Commission, if they get involved in this thing, is gonna say, "You're gonna have to create that easement through there in order to make that develop."
So would Council consider a continuance where we could take two tracks? One is that Mr. Yarvitz could consult with his client, and on the other hand, Planning could look at the possibility of rezoning that entire stretch to a C two, including necessary expansion for the road, what the projected impact on capacity would be.
But not past Santiago, right?
Not past Santiago, no.
And then, of course, isn't there a part three, which is the work that Martha's in the process of? Karen?
The text amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
Which says that all commercial applications get P and Z review?
Yes.
That's what he thought he was playing by anyway.
I thought that's great. I've always brought everything to Planning Department and P and Z anyway. I didn't know you could sneak one by without that.
So, Mr. Bellis, you kind of made a recommendation. I think the applicant is agreeable to that, Council?
I'd like a continuance on this. That's my neighborhood, that's Pitz's neighborhood. It's a high-traffic area. It's a great concern to me, and there's no site plan. There's no real definite answers right at this point about anything.
No, there can't be. With a zone change, you're not required to do that.
Right.
I can't give you a site plan because the rules are split. That's kind of the reason it's round and round. Yeah, no, I, I agree with your position. I'm not sure how to deal with this situation either for my client.
Well, we're getting information, though. So item one is easement. Item two, Martha, you're calling the text.
Yeah, it's, it's a proposed change to the land use development code, which us planners call text amendments.
How, how soon will that text be ready?
I'm writing it right now. I'm planning on taking it to the P and Z Commission this coming meeting. They will probably have some things that they would like to see added. I mean, it's not simple, this text.
So we're talking a couple months.
And then I need to bring it to you for your review and your approval. And in the interim, of course, we gotta have the attorney involved, so.
I would also like the time to work with Mr. Bellis or Mr. French, or whoever's gonna tell me what the road looks like now and what it needs to look like. I don't know if 50 feet is agreeable. Maybe if it's, I, I'd have to see what that really means as a portion of the property, too. Maybe he's happy to say, "Okay, forget the zone change. We'll just go on with what we have if that's too much of a, a stretch." So that's not my, that's not my decision.
Well, what's the likelihood of right now approaching the school? 'Cause they're going through their parking lot rehab for, I mean, in the, in the issue of safety with regards to their ingress and egress, asking for them for part of that easement?
Right now, they're the, the entire cause of the problem of the traffic at those areas. So maybe they might wanna mitigate some of that in addition to the neighbor across the street and get some kind of cooperation. That's a possibility.
Possibility to ask?
Neighborhood rezone.
Are they working on that now in that parking lot?
They're on it right now.
Who's, who's leading the way? Doug?
Uh, Doug.
I will go speak to Doug.
Thank you.
And see what he's got on the books there, 'cause they may need to widen the, you know, there should be a D cell lane or something for them as, as we are now.
It's in phase. Right now, they're working on the front side of the school where ingress and egress traffic comes through the parking lot.
But it all comes out there.
And then they're gonna jump over to the other side, which is the teacher bus administration side.
Right, right. I've been at that intersection many times.
Be a good time.
All right, I would be happy to meet with them to see if there's any plans for them to, maybe there could be a great participation between both landowners to widen that street and dedicate some easements, rather than one parse, one, rather than one parcel do all of it.
Well, you, you would, can't speak for them, but I would think that it would be in their best interest to, to provide the ingress and egress out of safety respect for their.
No, that's, that's a wonderful idea. I didn't know that they were doing that. I'd be happy to explore that.
Isn't it nice when we can all get along? It's tight, though, so.
Right now it is. Even if it, even in current state, if it stays, it's tight.
It's, yeah, right. All the traffic right now is created by the school. We have given no traffic.
Don't forget Sunday church.
Sunday church and Saturday night church. But, okay, I mean, I, I'm.
Do we need a motion for continuance?
Do, and, and Rick, I guess turn to you, but do we need, if we're gonna do a continuance, do we need a time specific or not?
Yes.
Yes, you have to specify a date. That, that doesn't mean that we can't then do a further continuance with the agreement of all the parties. But what I would suggest is, since this isn't gonna be done in the next two weeks, that you at least give it 60 days?
And if the application dies for the time issue, and then we have to republish and do it again, we'll do it again. I have no client, I mean, I have no development story on the project right now. So whatever amount of time it takes to improve the situation, we're happy to comply with.
If it's possible, Rick, why don't we just continue it to the August 12th meeting? Would that give us enough time? That's about 45 days.
We can put it on the July agenda and then continue it again, or you only get one continuance. So let's, give me 30 days and see what we come up with. If we're not done, we'll let you know.
The, the thing is, I'm not sure we, we can have our option done if we have to serve notice and go to the Planning Commission, P and Z, and then bring those alternatives at the same meeting that you would be here before the Council. So it, it probably would be 60 days.
What does P and Z have to do with this?
The text.
Martha?
Oh.
I think the Council would like the three options brought before them. The neighborhood rezone, Martha's text, and an option working with the school and your client.
Easement.
That's perfectly fine with me.
Does your, excuse me a second. Does your client own all the property to Paseo del Canyon?
Just the yellow that's outlined, but that's a single parcel, 8.8 acres.
That, the other properties are owned by someone else?
Yes. The, the parcel that's adjacent to the Arroyo to the south is a very weird, obscure property. If you look at it, it, I'm not sure, gets access from Paseo del Pueblo Sur, 'cause the DOT, it's too close to the traffic light for them to do another cut into that property. Its access comes in, pretty much will wind up coming in strictly off of Gustorff. From my last conversation, don't hold me to it. You see where they would come in at that narrow point? That's their, pretty much, most of their access. They don't, they may be denied a DOT access from Paseo del Pueblo Sur, even though they have a greater opening, because the distance from the traffic light and the Chevron station might prevent them from doing another ingress egress right there. They're not landlocked.
If they'd get a better egress, if they gave us 50 feet, 'cause it widened their opening. But my concern is, who's owns the property on the corner?
I don't know. I really don't know. There's two parcel owners there.
So Council, what's, what's the issues?
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved that we continue to our August 12th meeting. And if we can get the information requested, which is the three options.
I'll second that.
And, and Council, I just want to, did, and, and Counselor, when you looked at the date, 'cause you made it day-specific, can we make it the first meeting in that? Because I think there's a resolution down that we're gonna try to be changing our, our, our dates and, and so.
Well, that, that would fall on the, based on our resolution, that would be the first meeting of the month. Right? So that would be our regular 6:30 meeting. That would not move.
Well, we haven't discussed that yet.
Well, even if it did.
It would be August 5th if you, depending on if you pass that resolution, because the resolution specifies the first and third Tuesday of the month.
And you can just say the first meeting of the month.
So all amend my.
No, actually, Mr. Mayor, we have to state the date and time for the continuance.
Well, can we, can we do the resolution first?
You wanna, you wanna table this matter and then do the resolution?
Do the resolution, and then we'll give a date certain on the next one.
Okay.
So motion, so.
That August 4th, Councilman Gonzalez is, is really gonna be tight for Ms. Perkins and Mer.
So then can we do, I mean, just in the spirit that we'll have discussion on it, then should the resolution pass, our next meeting would be August 19th at 1:00?
That's correct.
No.
We're going out 60 days.
Yeah, 60, this would be a true 60 days right now. Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm fine with whatever you decide. I'm just working through this puzzle, too.
If, if Counselor Hahn will redact his second, I will amend my motion to table.
I redact.
So that we can, so I'd like to table this motion until we figure out what we're gonna do with our next resolution, and then we will revisit and set an actual date and time.
Do I have a motion to table till after we hear item 12A?
So move.
Anywhere, second?
I have a second.
And a second? Any further discussion? Not, hold for the vote.
Councilmember Cantu? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
You confused Renee?
I got it.
Sorry.
Okay, so we'll go on to, let's see here.
12A.
12A, so Resolution 1426, open meeting, resolution, amendment, Mr. Bellis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have a copy of the resolution with the highlighted changes in red. This, this initially changed per the request of some of the Council, one of the meetings to be a day meeting at 1:00. However, that created a conflict with the County Commission. So it recommends moving to the first and third rather than second and fourth Tuesday. However, subsequent to that, there has been discussion between some of the Council members as to moving both of the meetings to 1:00, which would not necessitate moving to the first and the third from the second and the fourth. And then also with the possibility of doing a court, to shorten these meetings, given the length of public comment that has come in, that we could do a quarterly, as I believe used to be done, meeting to the general public as a work session where the public could comment on any matters.
Councilman Peralta?
Yeah, on the last thing you mentioned, we did do that meeting and nobody showed up. Yeah, but there was still public comment at the regular meeting.
They'd hold it.
So, you know, it didn't work to have that special meeting, because you could still come in and make your comment in the regular meeting. My question is, why is there a conflict on the fourth Tuesday of the month with the County Commission?
The, our meetings are the same Tuesdays as the County Commission, and it presents a conflict.
I thought they were on the first and third, County Commission.
The schedule that was provided indicated that they were on the... Unfortunately, I don't have that with me, but I had, I had asked.
Am I correct? I thought so, too, but we've been having a meeting every Tuesday, so it seems like it's changed.
So my, my thought was to have the workshop meeting on the first meeting of the month, and then the regular council meeting on the second meeting of the month. So we would have the discussion and so forth on the first meeting, determine whether or not we wanted to go for approval on the, on the regular council meeting, and then, you know, so you would do it that way. That, that was my thought. Rather than having the regular council meeting first and then of the month, so you would have all your discussion and decision-making in the same month.
Staff is open to whatever Council wishes.
Council, you understand what I'm saying? In other words, the first meeting of the month, which would be the second Tuesday, would be the day meeting, and then the decision-making meeting would be the second meeting of the month. And I was thinking that the County Commission's regular scheduled meetings were the first and third, and ours were the second and fourth, and that's why they never conflict. And that's why we can go to council meeting, commission meetings in the daytime and not conflicted hours. But since you guys are having a meeting every week, I can't help that.
Renee, I mean Renee, I'm sorry.
No matter what we do, we're screwed.
Mayor and Councilmembers, according to their website, they have their regular scheduled commission meetings on June 10th and June 24th of this month.
So that's.
So they have them the second and the fourth.
Second and fourth.
So is that changing? What does July look like?
No, it, it is that way. Prior, prior to my coming over, I used to sit through a marathon at the county and then come to your meetings.
Oh, okay. So what I would.
We can go to first and third. We can go to first and third. I don't care, I mean, but I used to remember going to your meetings on the Tuesday that we didn't have one.
And ours have always been second and fourth.
Change someplace.
And in July?
I can't access July's.
I tried two or two and I couldn't access.
So with regards to meeting times, I don't care if it's the first and the third, second and fourth, I would almost.
Can you, excuse me, second, Renee, can you access their open meeting next resolution?
Let me see, I'll try that.
So I would almost prefer a one PM. I know we studied this earlier when we came on, because the previous council, even before I got elected, had one o'clock meetings, and there was a worry that there wasn't enough public participation at the one o'clock. But I think we've come to five, we're getting, I would venture to say we're getting the same amount as the one o'clock as we are the six o'clock. I look at it more towards the line of, Mr. Kennebeck, who's been here since, what time, Steve? Seven? Yeah. So, I mean, if we can have staff here at the same time for any questions that we have, I get the first and the third, but I'm still more inclined to do the one o'clock day meeting regularly.
I might add that one of the advantages we have had in doing that at the county is there was an advantage that we kept communication between the clerk or the manager to the staff, so that they didn't have to sit here for the whole meeting. So as we went down the agenda, we called the staff over, and they would appear at the meetings, and they could go back to doing what they were doing.
So, Mr. Mayor, then, Councilman Gonzalez, what I hear you saying is you'd like it to be one o'clock in the afternoon. I guess my only concern there is for the working stiff like myself out there, who would like to attend a council meeting, but is at work and can't leave work, and has an issue, like, for instance, their volunteer at Stray Hearts on the weekends. So that's my only concern about that. And it seems when the council did switch to daytime meetings, there are a number of us who were working, who just could never attend those meetings. Got any thoughts that way?
I don't.
That was my recommendation, to have meeting meetings, is to give people an opportunity to get out of work and come to the meeting.
That was great until we started staying here till one AM.
True. But our hope is, if we do, if Councilman Peralta is suggesting that first meeting of the month is our work study, we have staff here, then hopefully we can line it up so that second meeting really is slick.
I would venture to say we try it, because this burning the midnight oil is getting rough on home life.
When we did have the workshop meetings, they started at nine o'clock in the morning and went as long as it took during the day. And most of the time, they would take a good six hours. And by then, the regular meeting, we were out here by eight-thirty, most of the time.
So we're looking at the first and third Tuesday of every month, and the, and one meeting starting at...
Two meetings starting at one.
Two meetings starting at one. So to you guys, I'm available.
I don't think it's a problem starting at one o'clock. I've gone to enough county commission meetings and people who have an issue and people who want to attend and they know ahead of time, they go. There's not a problem at the county commission meetings filling up with people who want to.
Yeah, they don't accommodate.
Respect to them.
I think it'll be the same here, if they have something they really want to address.
Okay.
So I guess, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to make a motion that we move in, I guess, recognition of the county commission meeting, our meetings being the first and third Tuesday of the month, beginning at one PM.
Both of them at one PM?
Both of them at one PM.
We have a motion, we have a second?
I'm going to second that.
Okay, discussion?
Discussion. Unless we want to be here on the workshop meeting till seven or eight o'clock at night.
I'd rather do that than amend my.
And if we want, and if we want to have staff, no, if we want to have staff here, I would recommend that that workshop meeting start at about nine or ten o'clock.
Talking about one of the meetings?
That's mine. I mean, I'll go along with what you guys want to do, but I'm just thinking that, just from my own memory, and just like we're going now, there's a lot of stuff that we discuss, it just takes time to do. And if we don't give enough time to do it, and the availability of staff to answer our questions, and you don't want to pay the overtime.
Unless the advantage of doing the one o'clock and having them run later is that you can put a public comment portion at the end of the meeting also, so that people that show up after five o'clock can still add comment.
So do it. If anything's getting done in four or five hours, that's fine.
We do have a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
No.
Okay, so then we go on to.
First and third, starting?
Starting July first.
July first, one PM.
One PM.
With bells on.
With bells.
Mayor, council members, so the first meeting will be a workshop meeting? Are they both regular meetings?
I think they're, they end up both being regular meetings, right? Just heart of content being in the second meeting.
I believe that the goal would be to try to give you the larger issues at the first meeting of the month for discussion in preparation of a presentation for action at the second meeting. But more than likely, there may be some items such as, particularly in the next month or so, such as budget adjustments for the year-end, and that we might need to do as part of the workshop meeting, too.
Okay.
All right. So then we go on to Mayor's report, and the only thing that I have to report is that we did.
Wait, we've got to go back to our tabled.
Oh, sorry. Do we have a motion to bring back on the table the item that was tabled?
So moved to bring back the motion that was tabled earlier.
Second.
And a second, call for the vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Can you give me that date, please?
It would be August nineteenth.
We tabled item ten A until the meeting of August fifth.
Would it be a table or would it be a?
Continuance.
Continuance.
Continuance. I don't know.
It's the same thing.
Okay.
But you're awake.
Yeah, I'm awake.
He's not. What's that?
When?
One PM.
One o'clock.
One o'clock.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
So it's getting to be eleven, I'll be quick. Under Mayor's report, just want to, MFA met with us. They asked to meet with us, me and Rick, and Jacob met with MFA. The discussion was based on chemisa verde two, the continuing problems that exist there, and the willingness for us to mitigate or get rid of those problems within that area so that we can continue to move forward with possibly some additional affordable housing within the community. So I know that Mr. Bellis has that on his radar, as Jake does. Jake did mention to us in that meeting, because there has been several different attorneys that have, I guess, started the process and never followed through. And Jake did mention that that's kind of a ball within itself, that we need to, you know, we need some help in that area to get that, and to get that off our books so that we continue to move forward. So, Mr. Bellis, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, what came out of that meeting?
I think the most positive thing was an agreement by MFA to ask the Attorney General, Gary King, to release records that he was holding, and his hold on MFA working with us to resolve any of the title issues, so we could proceed. And that sounded very positive.
Because there is still a house within that area that youth built, built, and the title has not ever been cleared, that we can transfer it or sell it. So those, that's one consideration that we'll need to look at as we continue to move this forward. So just so, that's just FYI. Council?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if Councilman Cantu is familiar with this issue, but I certainly am not. And I would like to get appraised at your leisure by whomever would be the most appropriate person to talk to about that. I know nothing about this issue, so.
I believe that Mr. Caldwell was working with MFA's attorney to provide a summary, and when he gets back, at his first opportunity, can provide that to the council, summarizing all the outstanding issues and the timetable for the resolution.
Yeah, I'm unfamiliar with that.
Mr. Mark is pretty familiar with it as well.
I was there for all of the last several years of discussions with MFA, several of their attorneys, going back many years, trying to resolve the same issues you're trying to resolve again. And we have quite a bit of documentation, some of it, they came to our office and went through. The first question every time they showed up is, let's do a title search in all these lots. And they have several versions of the same information over and over again. But Mr. Caldwell said that he would probably request my help at some point, and I would like to volunteer that when you meet to discuss what the issues are, I know quite a bit about what happened and what's missing and what's not there, and what should get recorded on all of these things and why you're still dealing with it. So if you would like my assistance, I'd be happy to fill in some of the blanks if you need some of this.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Iravitz, actually, yes, your name did come up, and that was the plan.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so then we'll go under council reports. Anything that needs to be reported?
I have one.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I attended the TCEDC board meeting recently, and it was a very short meeting. And the discussion there was on the TESA, and then moving forward on there, at least to purchase the property there. And they're working on that still. And the other item was becoming, the TCEDC becoming the fiscal agent for, maybe if I'm wrong, Ben, but who's the UU now, Children's Center at the condo?
Yes.
And those were the two items on the agenda that night.
Mr. Mayor, as we approach our, and this may be a question more for councillor Peralta, but as we approach our fiscal year, and the hospital approaches its fiscal year with the county, and the renewal of lease, I'd like to look into the possibility of quite possibly getting the board to maybe send out RFP, as opposed to an operator with regards to Quorum, and putting it out there for either Presbyterian, Loveless, an operator with some depth, and maybe a deeper pocketbook with regards to an investment within this community. Just based on the direction that the hospital has gone and the hospitalists, it continues to be an area of concern for my constituents, which I get called on it nearly daily. So I'd like to see either some type of RFP process where a bigger entity, hospital still run by Taus Health Systems, can maybe come in and afford Taus the opportunity for good care.
And Mr. Bellis, one of the things that I think maybe within our next, maybe we can get a joint meeting, because I think this is something that would have to be discussed in that joint meeting, because the county, I think, holds a contractor?
Along the lines of what councillor Gonzalez was talking about, there's two things. One is if you're talking about a Loveless, or, which doesn't exist anymore, by the way, or you're talking about Presbyterian or any of those others, they don't do management. It's on, I'm sorry, they don't do management. They either buy it out from under you or the operation or whatever. So that would have to be considered an RFP to turn over the operation to somebody else, and Taus Health Systems would cease to exist. Or you go out for an RFP for a management company to come in and manage. Or you don't do a management company, and you hire a CEO, a CFO, and so forth, in-house. There's pros and cons to that. But it's something that we, that I'll have to look at. I have a meeting in the morning at eight-thirty with the hospital to go over the budget for the coming year. And I've looked at the financials, but I have a lot of questions about some of the numbers and the categories that they put them under, because they're very general. So I need to get the specifics underneath that before I can say anything. And then Wednesday morning, I will have an orientation with the hospital administrator, who is leaving July fourth. And so there is a search for an interim director coming up by Quorum. And that's part of their contract, provide for an interim director until a permanent director is found. So one of the things I've considered is that Quorum has been there now since ninety-two? I think it's been a couple of years before we built the new hospital, they were already on board. So I think it's something that the, that I will discuss with the board. It's something that I've mentioned to a couple of board members, that it's probably time for us to look at an RFP for management. Been in bed with a company that long, it's time to see whether or not the sheets are clean. And so that's another thing that'll be coming down. So I will know more, to be able to tell you a little bit more, by the first board meeting is the twenty-fifth that I will attend. And so next month, I should be able to, first meeting next month, I should be able to give you some more information. Now, there's one other thing that I'd like to bring up to you that I think is more informational than anything else. I sat on a board for the D H Lawrence Ranch Alliance. And we met with U and M on Monday. And if everything goes well this week, the ranch will be open to the public from ten to four on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays through October.
That's awesome.
And we are still having some discussions with them on different issues, but that is going to be with a paid U and M person on board at the site. It'll be probably administered through U and M Taus. And we will also be doing a docent training program through U and M Taus to supplement what we're going to be doing there. And the alliance will be paying for the cost of that person, U and M employee, to be there at the ranch. There will probably be a five-dollar fee to visit the ranch, to help offset costs, and also to help with capital improvements that are necessary at the ranch to maintain it and to improve it.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor and council, it's come to my attention that we need to give direction, the council needs to give direction as. the council needs to give direction as regards the Echo Park locker room and training room construction. It's becoming time sensitive. We have commitments for collegiate teams to be coming in in the fall, pending the completion of a, of locker rooms, and some feel, training rooms, that we will lose that ability by next year. We do have the $300,000 line item because of the suit. We have the monies there. I'm not a construction adept, but I understand that there are quotes for at least locker rooms through a prefab outfit. I also know that there's not a, a need to react and act in an emergency way, that we do have some time. And I've heard from others that they'd really like to look at the training room situation and maybe not only have the locker rooms, but training rooms created as well, which could conceivably cost $160,000 altogether, the locker rooms. And I don't have a formal estimate, we're just kind of ballparking it. But in any event, the question is this, can we put on our next agenda a discussion, and let's make a decision to give our town and Mr. Kennebec, and I'm so glad you're here, Steve, direction regarding the locker rooms and getting that field ready for collegiate action? And I'm open for discussion right now.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
The one question I would have is whether or not the remediation has been done with regards to the drainage issue that that money was intended for. That's my biggest concern, because to have locker rooms and have them flooded out is too different.
Right. Well, Mr. Kennebec is here, but it's my understanding that drainage and irrigation issues have been settled. And Mr. Kennebec, do you want to add anything to this? And Mr. Yarovitz, of course.
Good evening, Mayor, counsel, Mr. Manager. This has been a very frustrating project for a lot of us. When I got here, the park was still under the lawsuit, it was closed. The trees that were planted were dead, the field wasn't being used. So we've done a lot of stuff to get the park up and running. The drainage is, the drainage issue, the flooding onto the field has been dealt with. We fixed that ourselves. We put in a French drain and a barrier ditch that the Public Works guys put in, and that seems to have stopped the problem. So I think we can put in a set of locker rooms next to the storage shed without any major concern of flooding. We had some serious heavy rains after we put in the barrier ditch, and the water was diverted successfully to the drainage pond where it was supposed to go. So we've had a number of issues. I don't know if you want a history on kind of some of the issues and why we're still not very far along with this. And some of that is initially, we had two pots of money, and we weren't sure how much we could spend on the construction at the field. There was money set aside in case there was further litigation in a separate account. It was $80,000, another $300 and something thousand dollars. And in the last several months, I guess the former town attorney made the determination that that money, enough time had passed, no litigation had been forthcoming, so we could include that $80,000 in the total pot of money. Then we had the issue of the Living Design Group Company still having a contract on design and project management through October of 2013. And at the time, there were some who didn't want to really engage with that company since they were involved in the field not being completed. So that made some time pass. Then we had the former town manager asked the TSA to kind of take the lead on what to build, what should be the priorities. I, a year ago, over a year ago, submitted to the council my recommendations for what we should do to the field and in what order. So then we got to the point where we were going to have the TSA work with the school system, which has a, which owns the property and has a joint powers agreement with the town, and use through the school system their cooperative educational system procurement, which precludes the need for getting bids and RFPs. So that would vastly, very much streamline the process of getting anything built. So that kind of fell through for, and the idea was with Mr. Patterson of Living Designs Group being the contract facility manager for the school system, we could use his services through the school at no extra cost, and we wouldn't have to pay money out of the settlement for some kind of design and project management. But that, for reasons I'm not completely sure of, didn't really work out. And so if we can get the, the town also has the capability of signing up and being, using the CES procurement system. But we haven't done that yet. And we've asked, for a number of reasons, there's been questions on whether we can, as a municipality, participate in it, although I'm told that other municipalities are members. So if we can get onto CES, and if we can get agreement on what we want to build and what, what configuration, then I think we can probably get it done fairly quickly. But we're at the point now is we're, if we move forward now, we would have to use a regular procurement process and get RFPs. And we still need to agree on what it is we want to build and what order, and how much money on which item.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Steve, the question I had was, I know a while back when we had talked with TSA, there was some mention or question put out there whether or not TSA could formally go out and receive the RFPs on their own, as to not make it a government entity so that we don't get hosed by a contractor, especially on a modular or some type of site-built unit. Wouldn't be able to happen?
No, because it's, it's public money.
Well, we also looked at transferring-
It was their own money, then they could do it.
We looked at transferring the money to the school system, so they could use it to use the CES.
And then eliminate that process.
And then eliminate that process.
But it's not that big a deal to get on purchasing.
You wouldn't think so, sir.
We decided as a council that the locker rooms was the first.
Right. But we've had, we've had quotes for locker rooms from $40,000 to $244,000, so it's narrowing down what it's going to look like and what it's going to cost. And the prefab building that Mr. Yarovitz suggested, looks decent to me. It's on, it can be procured through the CES system, it's $100,000, I believe. So that's something we can easily afford, but with the money we have. But then we have other issues we need to spend money on, and so is that the right thing?
But it was my understanding that top priority was to get the locker rooms done first. And if we had any money left over, then we could talk about what-
What's next and what order?
So, is the locker, is that $100,000 for two locker rooms or one locker room?
1,440 square feet, male, female, no training room in the center. Could fit adjacent, Mr. Kennebec and I were out there, it would fit perfectly next to the existing bathroom structure with access to sewer and water.
Okay, but what you actually need is two team locker rooms that are unisexual because you got two female-
Since we met with Jake and Rick when they first came in.
It was April.
So April. But the thing is, that particular design that TSA is okay with, is one we can order from CES tomorrow if we had CES set up for the town.
How many square footage is that?
It's 1,440 square feet.
I have a copy of mine.
Per side or?
For the one structure with two-
And it has showers and toilets in it?
Yes.
That's pretty small.
I don't think it did.
I'm not agreeing that it's the best situation.
It was a Band-Aid.
But see, that's, that's, my concern is we, we, if the town on our own just decided, here's what we're going to put in there, and it gets built and paid for, and then folks come back later and say, well, this isn't what we needed, this isn't what we wanted. So that's why we're looking for input from these guys. So if that's what TSA wants, then I'm happy to put it in.
Much better said, but the bids that came in on the first set of plans that Mr. Patterson designed were outrageous.
Yes, they were.
Which was stick built, yeah.
$244,000.
And all I'm trying to say is that you need 1,000 square feet to size, that's 2,000 square foot building, so it's going to be $150,000 instead of $100,000. Okay, you got the money.
Counselor one?
So I'd like to simplify this. I'd like for the council to direct Mr. Kennebec somehow, and appropriate staff, Mr. Yarovitz and TSA, to prepare and present for us a locker room, training room situation. I'd like for all TSA membership to be involved, because you do have a retired architect, Mr. Sanchez, on that board now, or?
You don't have to have a membership.
There are other issues out there aside from a training room, and that is the actual placement, is there? When Mark and I were talking this afternoon, you know, we're wondering, well, is there actually enough room at where?
There is.
So, so I guess what I'm suggesting, Mr. Steve, is, is that what you're hearing from the council is present us a plan, not necessarily the cheapest, and not necessarily the Cadillac, but what is going to work to keep the Lobos, to get Air Force, to expand this, to maybe even larger venue, and turn this into a revenue generator. If the airport floats and we end up with a regional economic development zone, this all is part of that mosaic, don't even want to go there, you know? But these teams are going to want to fly in. So 42 seats.
With input from TSA.
I'm sorry?
With input from TSA, I'm happy to do that.
Yes, unless you're feeling overwhelmed and just, you can always tell me to take the hike.
The two issues I see are deciding on exactly what we want.
Okay.
Having consensus on that.
Yeah.
And then creating the vehicle so that we can, we can get it done quickly. Our standard procurement system, it'll take months, I got it to you.
Well, we need to have it, what I'm hearing is the construction for this prefab won't take that long once everything's ready to go.
But if we do it through the normal procurement process the town uses, it will take months. We'll have to get bids, we'll have to go through the entire-
Right. Go out for RFP and all of that.
If we get CES situation in place, then we can just order it off of the contract.
What is CES?
The county uses it too. It's an educational purchasing cooperative.
Cooperative educational system.
Satisfies the bidding requirements of the state.
It's a, like a GSA schedule for, primarily for school systems, but other entities are allowed to join it.
And you can pretty much buy anything off it.
So what does it take to get into it?
An education.
There's a membership fee in an application, which is pretty straightforward.
And past your finance committee.
I think there's a reluctance on the part of some folks in finance to sign up for it. And I've even heard that we can get signed up for CES, but we still have to go to bid. I was like, no.
No.
That's not the purpose.
Right.
So, Mr. Bellis, you'll look into this?
Yeah, there's just a slight percentage you pay on it to the cooperative for them handling the paperwork. But we've done it at the county, and it's, it was fairly quick.
And much like the GSA schedule, then you bypass the procurement process, but they're all vetted vendors, so they're on a list, you pick one, you say, I want this unit, please deliver it, and you're on your way. So you save so much time by not having to go through the bid process, wait to get bids. It just, it saves a lot of time. And you know that the vendors are trustworthy because they've been vetted through the system.
And I know $300,000 won't buy an elaborate dressing rooms with an elaborate training room because of the, you know, you need whirlpools in all the training rooms. And I know that that's not what you're looking at, but if you go to U&amp;M, or you go to the Air Force Academy, I've been in and played and wrestled in most of these, and I mean, they have some elaborate dressing rooms and things, and that's not what we're looking for. But whatever is appropriate that we feel we can afford is-
But what I'm asking is, you tell me what you want, and I'll get it done.
We have $300,000, bring us back something we can afford.
If we can get some consensus on what it is we want, I will push it through and get it done.
So here's what I want, two locker rooms, two training rooms, appropriately placed with the hope that in a couple of years, we're actually going to be in a place where we can build that second field. So we don't want to necessarily stick the locker rooms out on Salazar.
The thing is, if they're portable, we can move them.
It's not portable, it's modular.
I understand, but modulars can be moved.
Why?
If they're in the wrong place, where you want to do the second field.
Plumbing, and, okay, well.
So now if we go down that road, then we also, we should involve some kind of architect. And that's where using the school system and having Mr. Patterson available, who designed the Echo Park, would make some sense.
The modular company has its own in-house staff that will do all of that, and staff can sign everything. You don't have to hire an architect, you say, give me this, they send you a floor plan, is this what you want? Make your corrections, send it back to them, they give you a price, and then it's CES you ordered.
Let's go.
That's what we've been trying to go through, but the town has never joined CES, and the protocol of how to do this is driving Steve and I nuts.
Okay, well, let's, we don't want you to have to go to therapy. But I do want to stress too, that this is not an emergency, we just have to get on it.
No, I understand. I mean, this is, the frustrating part, this is a project we want to do, and we actually have the money for it.
Yeah.
It's just that there's some obstacles that have-
So is that, is that a reasonable expectation that by our next town council meeting, Mr. Kennebec, you're able to meet with Caitlin and TSA staff, determine what you want, bring it to the table, and say, okay, this is what we want, boys, get us the dough?
I can be with Mr. Kennebec, we can do a sketch plan, send it off to the modular company, they will send us back real drawings of what it is, we can pass them around, review it, get it priced, and bring it back.
Okay, I'm going to request that this first part actually be called a scoping exercise, and I would really like to encourage the new director, Caitlin, and the new people on TSA's advisory board, or whatever you call it, so Gene Sanchez, to be included in that. And that may take a week or so to put together, and you're going to take a vacation sometime this year, I hope.
Monday and Tuesday of next week, that's all for the summer.
That's it?
That's it.
Two-day vacation. What are we doing? No wonder, no wonder Union's coming in.
I think we can work on Monday and Tuesday.
I can start tomorrow.
But do you know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
So we definitely want to, and I'm open for critiques or suggestions, but we got to push this.
I think we're actually almost there. If we can just get, what I need to feel confident is that TSA, what we're putting in is what TSA wants.
Let me take a shortcut to that, okay? In recreation planning, depending on what sport you're playing, all of this stuff is already worked out. So if you're doing modular, it's even simpler, because they pre-design them, soccer has a set number of players, all you got to do is tell them the ages, it's 3.28 square foot per person, and that will, that will just send you, they'll, you can go to the website and pick the plan off the website.
Correct. There's no reinventing any of those here.
But Mark, a truly collaborative spirit, so we have Mr. Kennebec with his expertise, you with yours, Mr. Sanchez with his, Caitlin, the executive director is, okay, and the rest of this TSA staff. And then come, and let's, let's look at this in two weeks, is that possible?
Thank you, yes.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Sir?
Anything else? Mr. Bellis, you have anything else?
Thank you, Steve.
No, sir.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay. We have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We have a second. All in favor, send if I wish to.
You did it.
I'm not one o'clock.